Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. My apologies for the late start. We had a lengthy morning session. During the declared emergency in the city of Toronto, Committee of Adjustment virtual public hearings are being conducted by electronic means through WebEx, an online digital platform and streamed on the Toronto City Planning YouTube channel. These measures are necessary to comply with physical distancing requirements and in-person attendance limitations. This will be a virtual public hearing and participants who have registered in advance will be able to make their presentations to the committee using WebEx, an online event that is being moderated by city staff. Anyone wishing to view the hearing may do so by watching it on YouTube. Participants who have registered in advance will be connecting either by their computer, a phone, or tablet app, or by telephone. All participants are automatically muted on entry. When your item is called, each participant will be unmuted by the moderator, one person at a time. Only the committee members are participating by video. Any registered participants will be participating by audio only. We ask that you also mute your devices until you are called on to speak. For all those who are waiting online, please ensure that you have called in with the phone number that you were originally registered with. If you call in with a different number, you will not be able to speak on that item. To ensure audio clarity, I suggest that you do not use the speaker phones on your telephone. We acknowledge that the land we are meeting on is the traditional territory of many nations, including the Mississaugas of the Credit, the Inishna Bay, Chipewa, the Haudenosaunee, and the Wendat peoples, and is now home to many diverse First Nations, Inuit, and Matisse peoples. We also acknowledge that Toronto was covered by Treaty 13 with the Mississaugas of the Credit. In accordance with Sections 45 and 53 of the Planning Act 1990 as amended, this meeting of the Committee of Adjustment of the city of Toronto is called to order. My name is Alan Smithies and I will chair today's meeting. Joining us on the panel today are Ron Hunt, Asif Khan, Paul Kidd, and Nadini Sankar Peralta. City staff are also present. Daniel Antonacci, Brendan Clapham, Amir Nusn, and Kelly Reed. The Committee of Adjustment considers applications for variances from the provisions of the zoning bylaw that apply to property, permission to extend or alter lawful nonconforming uses, and consent to sever property to create new lots. Anyone attending today who wants to receive a copy of the committee's decision must submit a written request for a decision by email. Please ensure that you include your name, address, and email address, because Committee of Adjustment and the T-Lab will be sending notifications and appeal updates by email. If you do not agree with the committee's decision, it may be appealed to the Toronto local appeal body, T-Lab, or in some limited circumstances, to the local planning appeal tribunal, L-PAT. Appeal instructions are set out at the bottom of the committee's decision. Hearing procedure is as follows. I will call each item in the order listed on the agenda. Where an application is uncontested, the agent or applicant will proceed with their presentation if desired. If the committee does not require a presentation, applicants are to advise the chair should they wish to speak on that item. The committee may ask questions and undertake the matter into the committee for a decision. Each speaker, including the applicant or agent, is given a maximum of five minutes to address the committee. I will comment when you're reaching the five-minute limit. When addressing the committee, please state clearly your name and address. Please remember to confine your remarks to the matters described in the application. The applicant or agent proceeds first and will make their presentation to the committee. Please note that the committee may not entertain revisions to proposals at the hearing today. To ensure that revised application is accurate and that all those entitled to notice of the application are informed of the changes, the committee may decide to defer the application if it is substantially revised. Then, individuals either in support or opposed to the application are invited to speak. Committee members may ask questions of each speaker after they have finished their presentation. When all speakers are finished, the applicant or agent has an opportunity to rebut only those issues that were raised by the previous speakers. This marks the end of discussion on the item. The application is then taken into committee for decision. Are there any committee members who have a conflict of interest they'd like to declare this afternoon? None? Okay, thank you very much. We will proceed to the first item on our agenda, which is 33 Verneham Court. I have one person registered to speak. That is the agent Gabe Ferron. Are you there, sir?
Yes, I am.
Yes, Mr. Ferron, thank you. I was going through your file. I noticed that there are no comments or recommended conditions from staff. It's pretty clear what you're asking for. It's the one variance related to a rear yard setback. I think it's pretty clear what you're asking for. Is there anything that you'd like to tell the committee that isn't contained in the material we have before us this afternoon?
No, I have nothing to add.
Okay, thank you. Does the committee have any questions of the speaker? There being none, could I get a motion on this application, please? Ms. Sankar?
Through you, Mr. Chair. I think this is a very minor application. I'll put forward a motion to approve the application without conditions.
Thank you very much. Someone to second that motion? Mr. Khan seconds. All those in favor? That motion carries unanimously. Mr. Ferron, your application has been unanimously approved without condition.
Thank you very much. Have a good day.
Thank you. Item number 25, 24 Corwin Crescent. I have one person registered to speak. That is Christopher Zianis. Are you there, sir?
Yes, Mr. Chair, how are you?
Yes, thank you, sir. I was going through your file. I note that there is one staff report in connection with your application. It's dated the 17th of May and it's from City Planning. You appear to have no objections to your application, provided that the proposal is constructed substantially in accordance with the site plan drawing, submitted to the committee, and attached as attachment 1 to their report. And I'm just going through your application here. It's pretty clear what you're asking for in the three variances we have before us. Is there anything you'd like to tell the committee that isn't contained in the material that we have before us this afternoon?
No, sir.
Okay, thank you. Does the committee have any questions of the speaker? There being none, could I get a motion on this application, please? Mr. Hunt?
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I believe that this falls within the four tests, and I would move approval of this conditional on the May 17th planning staff report that it be developed substantially in accordance with the site plan drawings submitted to the Committee of Adjustment.
Thank you, Mr. Hunt. Someone to second that motion? Mr. Khan seconds. All those in favor? Motion carries unanimously. Sir, your application's unanimously approved, subject to city planning conditions.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Now on 15 Pickton Crescent, item number 26. I have one person registered to speak. That is Lucas Cocamelo. Are you there, sir?
Yes, I'm here.
Yes, hello, sir. Could I get your full name and address, please?
My name is Lucas Cocamelo, from Shiller Engineering. Address 2157 Royal Windsor Drive.
Great, thank you, sir. Just going through your file, I note that there are no comments or recommended conditions from staff. It's pretty clear what you're asking for. There's just three variances before us. I'll just ask, is there anything you'd like to tell the committee that isn't contained in the material that we have before us this afternoon?
No, I don't have anything further to add.
Okay, thank you, sir. Does the committee have any questions of the speaker? Could I get a motion on this application, please? Mr. Kidd?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is a straightforward application that meets the four tests for minor variance. I'd like to move to approve the application with no condition.
Thank you very much, Mr. Kidd. Someone to second that motion? Ms. Sankar seconds. All those in favor? Motion carries unanimously. Sir, your application's been unanimously approved without condition. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Item number 27, 6 Peebles Avenue. I have one person registered to speak. That's Mr. Jim Pfeffer. Are you there, sir?
I am, yes.
Yes, Mr. Pfeffer. I have, going through your file, I note that the only staff comments are from urban forestry in their standard condition. Pretty clear what you're asking for in the variances that we have before us. Is there anything you'd like to tell the committee that isn't contained in the material we have before us this afternoon?
No, there is not.
Okay, thank you, sir. Does the committee have any questions of the speaker? There being none, could I get a motion on this application, please? Ms. Sankar?
Yeah, through you, Mr. Chair. I do believe that this is a minor application and very straightforward. I'll put forward a motion to approve this, subject to forestry.
Thank you, Ms. Sankar. Someone to second that motion? Mr. Hunt seconds. All those in favor? That motion carries unanimously. Sir, your application's been unanimously approved, subject to urban forestry. Thank you. Item number 28, 610 Conacher Drive. I have one person registered to speak. That is Murat Ozgur. Are you there, sir?
Yes, sir, I'm here.
Yes, sir. Can I get your full name and address, please?
My name is Murat Ozgur, and I'm the applicant for 610 Conacher Drive. And my address is 11 Cassidy Place, Toronto, Ontario.
Okay, thank you, sir. Just went through your file. I noticed there are a couple of reports on file here. There's a recommended condition from urban forestry, pretty standard stuff. There's also a report from City Planning dated the 17th of May. They're recommending that you modify variance number seven for the proposed lot coverage from 32.4% to 32%. It's not modified, they're recommending refusal. If approved, they want you to be required to construct a proposal substantially in accordance with the north and south elevation and section plan drawings submitted to the committee as attachments 1, 2, and 3 to their report. I just wanted to ask, sir, did you want to change that variance number seven to reflect the recommendation from City Planning?
Yes, sir. I already revised the plans, and also I already sent them the section and the side elevations. So we are asking 32 persons instead of 32.4.
Hang on a second, sir. So are you proposing to make any changes other than to variance number seven?
Just number seven, sir.
Okay, so variance number seven. The proposed lot coverage is 32.4%, and you're reducing it to 32%.
Exactly, like the staff report.
Okay, thank you, sir. It's pretty clear what you're asking for in the variances we have before us. What I'll just ask, is there anything you'd like to tell the committee that isn't contained in the material we have before us this afternoon?
No, it's just about this three-story. Normally, this is, also you can see it in the staff report, it's the proposed building has two stories above established grade. Just because of a technical issue, there is a landing of the mudroom between the basement floor and the main floor. So this basement landing is the closest to the established grade. That's why it's considered as a first floor. And like a regular house plan, the first floor becomes the second floor, and the second floor becomes the third floor. But it's just a technical issue. Also, this is mentioned in the staff report as well.
Okay, thank you, sir. Does the committee have any questions of the speaker? Okay, could I get a motion on this revised application, please? Please note that variance number seven has been changed. The proposed lot coverage is 32.4% of the lot area. That has been reduced to 32% as recommended by City Planning. Could I get a motion on this revised application, please? Mr. Hunt?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I would move approval of this application conditional on the planning staff report requesting construction substantially in accordance with the north and south elevation and the section plan drawing submitted to the Committee of Adjustment, and the acknowledgement that variance number seven has been changed from 32.4% to 32%.
And also urban forestry.
And urban forestry requirements.
Thank you, Mr. Hunt. Someone to second that motion? Mr. Kidd seconds. All those in favor? The motion carries unanimously. Sir, your revised application's been unanimously approved, subject to urban forestry and city planning conditions.
Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you, sir. Now on item number 29, 14 Plateau Crescent. I have two people registered to speak. And one person, I have, pardon me, the agent Daniel Brodsky. Are you there, sir?
Yes, sir.
Yes, hello, sir. I have, I note that going through your file, there's only one comment in there from staff. It's from the Toronto Region Conservation Authority and stated the 19th of May. They indicate that they have no objections to your application. It's pretty clear what you're asking for in the two variances that we have before us. I'll just ask, is there anything you'd like to tell the committee that isn't contained in the material that we have before us this afternoon?
No, nothing new. The only thing, if you don't mind just one minute, just I want to make sure that it's clear about the variance of the length, that it's identified as a variance. But in reality, the building, the max, we do not exceed, our building does not exceed the maximum building length. On that side where it shows that we're exceeding, we are actually at 14.82 meters as opposed to 17 that is allowed. It's just because our lot is of an irregular shape, and the way we have to measure it with a center line and everything, then it shows like the maximum building length is longer, but the actual building is not.
Okay, thank you, sir. Does the committee have any questions of the speaker? There being none, could I get a motion on this application, please? Mr. Khan?
Thank you, sir. Mr. Chair, it's a simple variance, applies with the intent of the zoning bylaw, and no staff recommendation, and TRCA has no objection. I move that this application be approved.
Thank you, Mr. Khan. Someone to second that motion? Ms. Sankar? Thank you. She seconds. All those in favor? Motion carries unanimously. Sir, your application's been unanimously approved without condition. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Item numbers 30 and 31, which is 511A and 511B Woburn Avenue. For sake of efficiency, we'll deal with both these applications at the same time. I know there are a number of people who may be speaking on both applications, but if you could combine your presentations to dealing with them both at the same time. 13 people registered to speak. I have the agent Mangdi Zen. Are you there, sir? Mr. Zen, are you there? Mangdi Zen?
Yes, Mr. Chair and committee members, I'm here.
Yes, thank you very much. Can I get your full name and address, please?
Mangdi Zen, 1100 Golden Baker Road.
Okay, thank you, sir. With respect to both of your applications, 511A and 511B, I've noted that there is, with respect to 511A, there's a report from City Planning dated the 19th of May. And it's recommending that you modify variance number four for the soft landscaping from 63.94% to 70%. And modify number six for the proposed height from six meters to 5.7. That condition applies to 511B Woburn as well. There's also a letter from the 19th of May from Count Cole, and he's recommending that both your applications be refused. And 511B Woburn also has a recommended standard condition from urban forestry. So I wanted to ask, with respect to the city planning report, sir, did you want to make changes to your application as they recommend?
Yes, we have made some changes. Item number two and three have been removed.
Okay, hang on a second. So is that for both 511A and 511B?
Yes.
So one and two are deleted?
Two and three.
Oh, pardon me. Just two and three?
Yes.
Two, variance number two relates to the proposed east side yard setback. That variance is being deleted. Variance number three is the proposed east side yard setback for the platform is 1.168. That's being deleted as well?
Yes, correct.
Okay, any other changes?
Nope.
So are you proposing to change variance number four for the soft landscaping?
Yep, increase from 63 to 70. And item number six...
So the soft yard landscaping in the proposed soft landscape area is 63.94% in variance number four. You're proposing to increase it to 70?
Yes, correct.
And you're proposing to modify variance number six, which is the height?
Correct.
And you're increasing the, you're decreasing the height from six meters to 5.7?
That's correct.
Okay, so that's the extent of the changes?
Yes.
Okay, sir. If you would like to, as I indicated, we have other speakers. So if you could, please make the, give the committee a presentation on what you see as the merits of your proposal? Sir?
Yes, hello?
Would you like to tell the committee what you see as the merits of your proposal?
Oh, yes. Our proposal is to construct and addition laneway suites to the detached garage.
It's a detached garage with habitable space above it, correct?
Correct.
Okay, do you want to give us a little more detail? What's your justification for it?
For Toronto housing, affordable housing.
Okay, that's it?
Okay, yeah, that's it.
Okay. We'll go to the next speaker on the list. I'm just going down our... I have a Kim Myers. Are you there? Kim Myers, are you there?
Yes, I'm here.
Yes, madam. Can I get your full name and address?
It's Kim Myers, 519 Woburn Avenue.
Okay, thank you, madam. Remember, you're commenting on both the applications. So if you could give us your comments and your thoughts on this application, these applications?
Certainly. I'll state up front that we request that these variances should be denied. I say "we" because I'm speaking on many of the neighbors that submitted letters of opposition. The first item I want to address is a procedural issue. Namely, the display of the public notice sign regarding this meeting was absent. The applicant did not display the sign. Quite the contrary, it was thrown to the side of the lot in debris. I have provided pictures in Exhibit E of my letter. If you want to bring my letter up, I will be referring to various pictures throughout. And these particular pictures I'm speaking about, that was taken on Exhibit E, sorry. It was taken on May 19th. I can confirm that the signs remain in the same locations today. And I assume that the display of signs is important, particularly given that July 1st of this year, the committee is actually rolling out a redesigned notice of public hearing sign policy. My second point, I want to point out that we, meaning the neighbors, we are not opposed to laneway suites in general, and this is not a laneway suite issue today. Rather, we are opposed to the extreme overdevelopment of this property that is completely out of character with the neighborhood. In 2016, this committee denied the developer's request to sever the lot. The decision was, however, overturned by the OMD, and the developer obtained approval for 18 variances. Fast forward to today, and the current developer is now asking for an additional 12 variances to build two residential dwellings. So I just, please picture this, where once there was one home, one family, on a 40-foot lot, the developers are now asking, via a two-step process, I might add, for more variances to permit the building of four homes. That is four homes, four families on the same lot. So I just ask, how could the committee reject the building of two homes just a few years back and now approve the construction of an additional two? I would just like to draw your attention to Exhibit B. I have various photos provided that highlight this proposed density and overdevelopment of the property that will result. While you are, there are various photos. If you could continue scrolling through, Exhibit B has probably five or six photos. Thanks. And while you are looking at these photos, I will go on to my third point, which is with respect to the laneway suites bylaw itself. As I'm sure you're aware, this took many years, approximately 20 years, to come into force. In my letter, I actually included an excerpt from the city planning presentation in 2018 regarding this laneway suite strategy. And it provides that the bylaw requirements are meant to help minimize impacts to adjacent property and ensure structures that contribute to neighborhood character. I have to say, two structures almost six meters high in the rear laneway of 511 Woburn will not minimize impacts to adjacent properties. Quite the opposite, actually. These two structures will result in 100% loss of privacy to the four surrounding neighbors. These neighboring properties are homes with families, with many small children. To take away the privacy for these families is not an appropriate development and use of the neighboring land. Furthermore, the measuring, the massing of these two structures does not meet the character of the neighborhood. I've included a photo, the third photo in Exhibit A, which shows the current laneway. There is not one other, sorry, you just passed it, right there. There's nothing that is even close to six meters in height. Specifically then, with respect to the requested height variance, the permitted height of a laneway at this location at 511 Woburn is four meters. The applicant initially requested six, true, they reduced it to 5.7. This is still egregious. This is 42.5% higher than what is permitted by the bylaw. To say that's a minor variance completely eviscerates the height restrictions in this bylaw. I ask you, is that a precedent that this committee would like to set? In summary then, I request that the committee not approve this application. The variances are not minor. They're not desirable for the appropriate development of the land. They do not maintain the purpose and intent of the zoning bylaw. The committee believed and decided in 2016 that the original severance and variances were not appropriate for this site. We ask that the committee once again recognize that these additional variances are inappropriate. Thank you.
Thank you, madam. Does the committee have any questions of the speaker? There being none, we'll move to the next person on the list. I have a Danielle Kaplan. Are you there?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes. Ms. Kaplan, can I get your full name and address, please?
My name is Danielle Kaplan, and my address is 434 Bedford Park Avenue.
Okay, thank you, madam. If you could give us your thoughts on this application?
Sure. So following up a lot on what Kim has proposed and said, we are strongly opposing the requested variances proposed by the developer of 511 Woburn Avenue due to the impact that this will have on the neighboring properties, and I'm talking specifically my property. Our house, and particularly our backyard, is directly behind 511 Woburn. We use our backyard year-round. We are for seven months of the year in our backyard as much as possible. And for 28 years, we have experienced privacy and tranquility in our backyard. For us, our backyard is a place of beauty, rest, and recovery, particularly for my husband, who was severely injured in an accident. We rarely use and need our backyard. If the proposed variances are approved, and I'm particularly referring to the height variance of 5.7 meters, which is a significant increase in height, this will definitely infringe on our privacy, the beauty of our backyard, and will significantly impede our view of trees, skies, sun, et cetera. Essentially, our backyard view will be two imposing two-story structures of 5.7 meters side by side. This will definitely change for the worse our backyard quality and experience. So that is my personal feel on that. And following on what Kim said, in addition to the loss of privacy, we believe by having these four structures on this small lot, on this divided lot now... we believe by having these four structures, uh, on this small lot, on this divided lot now, will definitely change the character of our small, very quiet laneway, and certainly not for the better. Previously, as Kim said, there was one house. Now there are going to be four tall dwellings, which is, which significantly increases the density of structures on the lot. And as Kim said, this is not against laneway suites. We're talking specifically this lot. And as you've seen from the objection of the letters that you're sitting with, and just to mention, not all of those people, they, they registered by mistake, but only a few of us are speaking. So you might call names and they won't respond. But we've got at least fourteen surrounding neighbors who are equally concerned, who are equally unhappy with the structure density on this particular lot. So we hope you will be sympathetic to our reasons and our concerns in objecting to the approval of the proposed variances. And I thank you for listening, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you, madam. Uh, does the committee have any questions of the speaker? There being none, we'll move to the next person on the list. I have a Daniel or Sherry Glassberg. Are you there?
Not be speaking. She just wrote a letter.
Okay, thank you. Uh, do I have, I have a Sheila Berenstein, is she there? Sheila Berenstein, are you there? Okay, Ms. Berenstein is not there. We'll take her off the list. I have next on the list a Patrick or Darlene Sonat. Sonat, are you there? Patrick or Darlene Sonat?
Yes.
Patrick Sonat, are you there?
Yes.
Yes, sir, can I get your full name and address?
Uh, five zero seven Woburn Avenue.
Okay, thank you, sir, if you'd like to give us your thoughts on this application?
Um, I'm going to echo what Kim and the, and the last speaker said. Uh, this was a two-step process, which this committee objected the first time. And it was appealed, and the O M B, or the, that O M B agreed to proceed with it. And then, and then later on, um, later on, uh, much to our surprise, uh, an application made with numerous variances, we objected variances. And we will speak on the...
Mr. Sonat, can you speak up, please?
Yes, sir, can you speak up, we're having trouble hearing you.
Um... Take a technical...
Mr. Sonat? Your voice is breaking out.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yeah, um, I, I'm echoing what, um, uh, Kim and the, our neighbor behind us spoke about. Danielle Kaplan. Um, uh, first, Kim, uh, indicated that this was a, a two-step process, which resulted in an application to build four, um, uh, dwellings on one lot that was formerly one house. Um, we object most generously to the height, uh, variance. Um, and, and the concession of moving from six to five point seven, or five point seven to something a little less is not even close to what, uh, Ms. Kaplan pointed out earlier. Uh, and, uh, we would, uh, my wife and I would respectfully ask the committee to turn this application down. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Uh, next person on the list, I have a Shane...
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Uh, we missed, uh, a Pam Main to make a deputation.
Pam Main? Oh, she already spoke.
No.
Well, she didn't?
No.
Pam Main, are you there?
Yes, I am, thank you. My name is Pam Main. I reside at sixty-seven Chronicle Avenue, and I'm on the board of the Upper Avenue Community Association. I'd like to speak to the side, side yard setback variances requested under each application. As mentioned, the five eleven Woburn applications each require six variances to be approved. This is after nine variances approved in the O M B decision for each of the twenty-foot lots. The application for each unit is for a two hundred and thirty-three square foot or twenty-one square meter full facility room. Of the four side yard setbacks required under the regulation, the applicant, applicant could only meet one. Meeting the one setback was, was possible as the regulation allows zero setbacks on one side yard if no, if the wall has no windows. This unit, this small unit has one window. This will essentially create a sweatbox with no circulation possible. By installing only one window, the applicant, applicant was able to meet the zero setback requirement. So it's probable that the unit design was compromised to squeeze in the laneway suite, further illustrating that the unit's not suitable, given the generous O M B conditions and the, and the six additional variances requested. It should also be noted that the foundation lot coverage of the garage was specified in the O M B decision at nine point three percent, which is exactly what it is today. So the entrance to the suite requires a side yard setback, reducing the distance to each neighbor to the east and west to just over one meter. The applicant, uh, the entrance is an exterior staircase rising up eight feet, eight inches to the entrance platform and the doorway, which faces over the adjacent neighbor's backyard. The height of this platform exceeds the height of the fence lines on the adjacent properties. This will result in a picture-perfect view of neighbors to the east, west, and south. The reduction in setbacks only make this matter worse. Also, the exterior staircase is a serious safety issue in winter months, and the use of salt will, will further impact the underprovisioning of softscaping. The applicant did mention at the start of the, um, applicant presentation that they were going to, uh, remove the variances for setbacks. It will be very difficult to have an exterior staircase up meeting the EMS requirements if the staircase is reduced. There's also a request for a rear yard setback variance, reducing the distance of the back wall of the suite to less than one meter from the laneway. Picture seven of our submission illustrates the character of the existing laneway, and Kim also spoke to this. You'll have noted that all of the garages in the laneway are low-level. The height massing resulting from the application is not in keeping with the character of the laneway as illustrated in the picture. And the requested variance to reduce the rear yard setback will only exacerbate this issue and result in considerable shadow, shadowing to neighbors to the south. Side yard setbacks far exceed what was intended under the laneway suite zoning regulations and do not meet the intent of the zoning, zoning bylaws as required under the four tests of the C of A. On this basis, the setback should be denied for these applications. Counselor Cole and the fourteen letters of our objection articulate the issues with these applications, and we are in full agreement that the variances should be denied. Thank you.
Thank you, madam. Does the committee have any questions of the speaker? There being none, we'll go to the next person on the list. I have a Shane Katz. Are you, are you there?
Oh, yes, I'm here.
Yes, can I get your full name and address, please?
Uh, yes, Shane Katz, five zero nine Woburn Avenue.
Okay, if you'd like to give us your thoughts on this application, and sir, if you could tell us something we haven't heard before?
Yeah, no, of course, I appreciate that. Um, I echo everybody who has spoken before me. Uh, I have deep concerns, uh, and they've already all been highlighted. Um, you know, I have three young children who play in the backyard a lot, and I have concerns about a, a very tall structure that oversees our, the backyard and overlooks the fence. Um, and again, I don't, I don't want to take up your time. Uh, most of the issues I have have already been touched upon. But, uh, it's my hope that the, these applications will be rejected, uh, in total. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Uh, item number, pardon me, uh, next person on the list, I have a Linda or Al DeBrelli, are you there? Okay, they're not there, so I'll take them off the list. I have, uh, Donna, Donna McCandlish, are you there? Donna McCandlish, are you there? Donna McCandlish, are you there?
Hello?
Yes, hello?
Yes, hi.
Yeah, can I get your full name and address, please?
Sure, it's Donna McCandlish at four ninety-nine Woburn Avenue.
Okay, thank you, madam, if you'd like to give us your thoughts on this application, but please don't tell us stuff we've heard before.
I, I would just like to add my voice to the other people who have spoken. No, I don't have anything additional, but I feel strongly on all, all of the, um, comments that have been made, that this is inappropriate for our particular neighborhood, and in particular for the neighbors immediately adjacent to the property. Um, that's, that's it.
Yes, thank you very much, madam. Uh, any questions of the speaker? Okay, go on to our next, uh, speaker. I have a Greg or Audrey Pugin. Are you there? Greg or Audrey Pugin, are you there? Greg or Audrey Pugin, are you there? Okay, we'll, we'll, we'll skip them, we'll come back. Uh, my last person on the list, I have a Marissa Ryzen, are you there? Marissa Ryzen, are you there?
No, but Mr. Chair, we do have one other person that would like to make a deputation. We have a France Rochette.
Okay, uh, is that last name, Fran...
Rochette?
Okay.
Yeah, hello, my name is France Rochette.
Yes, can I get your full name and address, please?
My name is France Rochette, I live at Thirtyburn Crest Drive. I'm the chair of Upper Avenue Community Association.
Okay, thank you, madam, if you'd like to give us your thoughts on this application, please note, uh, if you can, please don't tell us stuff we've already heard.
Sure. Um, I wish to address mainly the softscape requirement. Uh, we disagree with the requested variance. We'd like to remind the committee of adjustment that the zoning regulation recommends eighty-five percent softspacecaping. And I think you've already seen from the pictures that, that were shown by, um, by Kim earlier just how intense the site is. Um, the softscaping condition cannot be met with the foundation as it exists today. Any change to the foundation is going to be in contravention to the O M B decision of two thousand and seventeen. There is an option to redesign a home in such a way that no deck could ever be constructed, but that still would not meet the eighty-five percent softscaping we think is appropriate. We have made numerous site visits during the, the review process. Site viewing is not always possible for the planning group, and it really does offer unique insight into how appropriate the development is. In particular, the extremely close distance of eight, eight foot and ten inches between the proposed laneway suite and the main residence, if you include the very large basement entrances, particularly at issue. It does not meet the intent of the bylaw or the official plan. In our letter of objective, of objection, which was submitted May seventeenth, hopefully you can see referring to picture number six there in our submission, and you can show it if you'd like. Uh, it shows the foundation of the ancillary building, the new home in the framing stage, and the exit from each basement. The concrete stairway exit from each home extends thirteen foot, resulting in a, in an onsite distance of the ancillary wall between the, um, the lane, the proposed laneway suite of eight foot and ten inches. That is, the eight foot I referred to earlier. We realize the calculation to the main real wall of the residence is not the normal distance that is considered, but we advise the committee to consider the unusually large thirteen-foot basement exit as intrusion into the softscape. These structures are in place today. A deck is also planned on each side of these basement exits, and it's the only outdoor space for the home. In addition to this argument, there should be no reduction in softscaping due to the excess lot coverage of approximately forty-three percent on each lot which was permitted by the O M B. The committee of adjustment recognized that it is excessive in the previous application and denied the severance in two thousand and sixteen. The area is subject to significant flooding, as outlined in the STAN-TAC report of two thousand and fourteen, specifically along Woburn and Gray in that very area. The lack of permeable surface will further increase flooding risk to all the neighbors. And we have written repeatedly to the committee of adjustment about the flooding issues. The entire softscape between the main house and the ancillary building will be completely shaded, not permitting any vegetative growth. U A C A has repeatedly written to the C of A regarding the excess, the excess lot coverage in the area and the cumulative, cumulative loss of softscape and water permeable surfaces in the area. We have a very high water table, which is prone to basement flooding, and you perhaps...
Madam, you realize, I've said it before, the committee does not deal with drainage issues. That's something that's dealt with at the building permit stage when the applicant, if, if this application is approved, he'll have to satisfy the, uh, building department that his stormwater can be managed on-site. So that's not something that the committee deals with.
I'm talking about the impact on the neighbors and the impact of reducing softscape.
Madam, we're not dealing with that, we're dealing with the variances we have before us.
Okay, I'll say, in closing, we, we support the letter by Counselor Cole, and the city, citywide planning team has spent many hours developing regulation for laneway suite that would govern the establishment of our neighborhood, including the softscape requirement of eighty-five percent. Thank you.
Madam, does the committee have any questions of the speaker? There being none, I'll go back to, uh, some of our previous speakers who, uh, who didn't speak up. I have a Marissa Ryzen, are you there? Marissa Ryzen is not there, I'll take her off the list. I have a Greg or Audrey Pugin, are you there? Greg or Audrey Pugin? Not there, I'll have to take you off the list. We'll go back to the list, our list of speakers, I'll go back to the agent, Mr. Zen, are you there?
Yes, I'm here.
Yes, sir, you've heard the comments from the previous speakers, if you'd like to reply to them?
Yes, uh, regarding the, uh, privacy issue, uh, my client is plan, planning to, uh, plant trees, uh, in the backyard, and, uh, there'll be, uh, no, uh, windows, uh, looking to the neighbor in the future.
Okay, that's it?
Okay. Uh, yeah.
Okay, thank you. Uh, does the committee have any questions of the speaker? There being none, uh, just, uh, I'd like to get a motion on, on this, these two applications, but please note they have been revised. Uh, both five eleven A and five eleven B Woburn. The variance number two, related to the proposed east side yard setback, that variance has been deleted. Variance number three, the proposed east side yard setback for the proposed platform, that has been deleted. Variance number four, the proposed soft landscape area is six point nine, sixty-three point nine four percent, has been reduced, increased to seventy percent. Variance number six, the proposed height is six meters, that has been reduced to five point seven meters. So if I could get a motion on...
Mr. Chair, if I, uh, if I can just interrupt. Uh, I, I just noticed they've, um, uh, they flipped the, uh, variance five and six from, uh, uh, from five eleven A to five eleven B. So actually, in five eleven B, it's, it's, um, item number five that's revised.
Okay, yeah.
Uh, not six.
Mister Kidd, let me just, uh, take a look at that.
They flipped five and six.
Yes, thanks, uh... Okay, thank, thank you, Mr. Kidd, let me just go through this and make sure I've got it right. Thank, thank you for pointing that out, Mister Kidd. So variance on five eleven B, which is item number thirty-one, uh, variance number two has been deleted, which is the west side yard setback. Variance number three has been deleted, which is the proposed west side yard setback for the platform. Variance number four, which is the proposed soft landscaped area, sixty-three point nine four percent, has been increased to seventy percent. And variance number five, thank you, Mister Kidd, the proposed height is six meters, that has been reduced to five point seven meters. So if I could get a motion, actually, let, let's, let's split them up and get a motion on each application. For, uh... on each application. For variant, for item number thirty-five-eleven A, Woburn Avenue, can I get a motion on the revised application, please? Mr. Khan?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm taking five-eleven A Woburn Avenue first. Sir, variance number two and three have been deleted. Number four has been modified to seventy percent. Number five stays the same. Number six has been reduced from six to five point seven meter. Now, taking the staff recommendation, variance number four has been modified, number six has been modified. The variance number four, though modified, but still not near compliance of the zoning bylaw intent. Number five, ancillary building structure exceeds allowable for retard, and separation distance is much shorter than the minimum required of seven point five. It is unsafe for life and property. Variance number six, though modified, still not meeting the intent of the official plan and zoning bylaw. Therefore, I move this application to refuse.
Okay, we have a motion from Mr. Khan to refuse five-eleven A Woburn Avenue. Do you have someone to second that motion? Mr. Hunt seconds. All those in favor? Okay, opposed? Miss Sankar dissenting that, Mr. Zhang, that your application, five-eleven A Woburn Avenue, has been refused. Thank you. Now we're on five-eleven B Woburn Avenue. If I could get a motion on this revised application, please? Mr. Khan?
Thank you, sir. Mr. Chair, I'm talking about five-eleven B Woburn Avenue. Sir, variance number two and three have been deleted. Number four has been modified to seventy percent. Number five has been modified to five point seven, and six stays the same. I'm taking the staff recommendation, which has variance number four and five modified. Still, the variance number four is much less than the acceptable percentage of, and variance number five, height of the laneway suite is not complying zoning bylaws intent. Variance number six does not meet zoning bylaws and intent of the official plan, not a suitable proposal. Therefore, I move this application to be refused.
Thank you, Mr.-
Also, this is a harshly-
Thank you, Mr. Khan.
... harshly conditioned.
We have a motion. We have a motion from Mr. Khan to refuse the application for five-eleven B Woburn Avenue. Do you have someone to second that motion? Mr. Hunt seconds. All those in favor? Opposed? Miss Sankar dissenting. Sir, your application at five-eleven B Woburn Avenue has been refused. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. We are now on item number thirty-two, one forty-one Kingsdale Avenue. I have two people registered to speak. And the agent is Mortesa Davari, are you there?
Good afternoon, sir. Yes, I'm here.
Yeah, can I get your full name and address, please, sir?
Sure. It's Mortesa Davari, address thirty-eighty on the street.
Okay, thank you, sir. I'm going through your file. I note that there is a couple of reports here from the city. There's recommended condition from Urban Forestry. City Planning has a report of the seventeenth of May. They recommend eliminating variance number ten for the proposed front yard landscaping. And eliminating-
Yes.
Eliminating variance number twelve for the proposed front yard landscaping is measured under bylaw five-sixty-nine dash twenty thirteen. If the revisions are made and it's approved, it would be subject to constructing the proposal substantially in accordance with the west and east elevation drawings submitted to the committee, date stamped April twenty-seventh, twenty-one, ninth, twenty-twenty-one, and attached as attachment one and two to their report. Just wanted to ask, sir, did you want to make those changes to as recommended by City Planning?
Yes, of course, sir. We are eliminating items number ten and twelve.
Okay, so let me just clarify this. So you're proposing to the variance for the lot coverage, which is thirty-two point eight-six percent.
Yes.
You're proposing to delete that? That's variance number ten?
Number ten is regarding the front yard landscaping.
Hang on just a second. Variance number ten on the notice reads, "The proposed lot coverage is thirty-two point eight-six percent of the lot area." Are you proposing to delete that?
Not, sir. I'm sorry. So, I mean, I would like to eliminate item number ten, as I see on the list, number is regarding to the front yard landscaping.
Sir, are you- You're going from your zoning view. You've got to look at the notice, sir, the notice that's been sent out to the public.
Yes.
So look at the notice. Variance number ten reads, "The proposed lot coverage is thirty-two point eight-six percent of the lot area." Are you proposing to delete that variance?
No, no, sir. Sorry about that. No, we are going to keep the thirty-two percent.
So you're going to keep it at thirty-two percent, even though planning-
Yes.
-reminds you eliminate it. Okay?
Yes.
Are you proposing to eliminate variance number twelve, which is the front yard soft landscaping of sixty-one point eight-three percent? Are you proposing to keep that or delete it?
We are going to eliminate that, sir.
You're going to keep it? Okay, all right.
No, no, we are not going to. We are going to eliminate that.
Oh, so you're going to eliminate number twelve?
Mr. Chair, I'm hearing something different, because I'm seeing from my notice, he is following what planning is asking. Variance number ten is the front yard landscaping. He said he's eliminating it. And variance number twelve for the soft front yard landscaping as well. So I heard him saying he's eliminating ten and twelve, and I've got those accurately here in mind. So I'm not sure if you have something different, or if everybody else does, but I'm seeing it here, and he's following what planning wants, is what I'm hearing.
Thank you for the clarification, Miss Sankar. I must have missed it. Thank you. Okay, we have one other person registered to speak, sir, if you'd like to give us a presentation on your revised application.
Mr. Chair, can we please get a clarification on what he's changing? Because I'm looking at the public notice, and it's different.
Okay, hang on.
If I go to the public notice-
Okay, the public notice for variance number ten, "The proposed lot coverage is thirty-two point eight-six percent of the lot area." Okay, sir, are you eliminating variance number ten?
No, sir. We're going to keep that. But for some reason, it's different from the-
The staff report shows something different.
Yeah, the staff report is different. I don't know what-
Go by the public notice, not the staff report.
Yeah, go by the public notice, not the staff report.
Sir, even according to, yes, according to-
Have you got the public notice in front of you?
Yes, yes, I have it.
Okay, go down to variance number ten and read to me what it says.
According to number ten, it says the minimum of fifty percent of the front yard must-
No, that's not the notice, sir. Am I wrong?
That's what I received in my office.
It's the notice distributed to the public, sir. Public hearing-
So sorry to say this, but the staff report has mixed up the variances. So what was put in the public notice, really what they're saying is not variance number ten, they're talking about variance number eleven, because they're clearly saying it's front yard landscaping, as well as everything to do with front yard landscaping. So it's different.
They've mixed it up, but I just want to make sure that the applicant understands. Yeah, I can see what you're saying, miss. They've mixed up the variances in their planning.
Yes, you're right, sir.
Okay.
Yes, you're right.
Let's go by this, sir. I'm going by the notice. I have the public hearing notice that was distributed to the public. In that public hearing notice, there are fourteen variances. Number ten says the proposed lot coverage is thirty-two point eight-six percent of the lot area. That's the variance that you want to eliminate, correct?
No, sir. We are going to keep that. We are going to eliminate item number eleven.
Number eleven. Okay, so-
Okay, what other one are you changing?
The minimum fifty percent of the front yard must be soft landscaping. We are going to eliminate that item and even item number twelve.
So eleven and twelve are being deleted.
Yes.
From the public hearing notice?
Yes.
Thank you.
And you're not eliminating the coverage? Okay, all right.
Actually, sir, we revised, we revised that-
Eleven and twelve are being deleted.
Yes.
Eleven deals with the front yard landscaping, and twelve deals with the soft front yard soft landscaping. Both are being deleted.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, thank you. If you'd like to give us your presentation on why this application should be approved?
Yes, sir. I think we are proposing to a story, the testing of family dwelling. What we are proposing is not different from most houses in the neighborhood and match neighborhood character. So, and even if you have a look at immediate neighbors, we try to follow the rules. On the other hand, we look at the immediate neighbors, and we saw the distance from their house to the property line, and we believe we provide that enough space to the property line. So we decrease the required side yard setbacks, but still I think our situation is better than our immediate neighbors.
Okay, thank you, sir. Does the committee have any questions of the speaker? Go to the next person on the list. I have Jim Cleary. Are you there? Jim Cleary, are you there?
Oh, there we go. Now I've been unmuted. Can you hear me now?
Yes, Mr. Cleary, we can hear you.
Excellent. My name is Jim Cleary.
If you'd like to give-
My address is- Certainly, yes. I'm a friend of the family that lives at one thirty-nine Kingsdale. And of the twelve remaining variances, we are concerned about the one relating to the side yard setback on the west side. The variance is requesting one point two-two meters against the requirement of one point eight meters. That is a reduction of over thirty percent. We believe that that's an excessive, non-minor request. It leads to certainly a fire safety concern. And I understand that that will be addressed by the building code at the permit stage. However, I do work with the building code, and the current design will require a two-point-four meter setback in order to be safe from spreading fire from a proposed house to one thirty-nine Kingsdale. More related to the planning, a lot of considerations, we feel that the thirty-two percent reduction in the side yard setback is excessive, and that it will result in the proposed house crowding the existing house and shading it badly. So we're requesting that that variance be not approved. There's also a temporary concern during construction that because of the depth of the foundation and the fact that the excavation will have to exceed the size of the foundation walls, even at one point eight meters, the excavation is going to become dangerously close to the foundations of one thirty-nine. If the variance to one point two-two meters is accepted, safe construction practices for sloping that excavation under the occupational rules would require the excavation to extend literally into the basement of one thirty-nine Kingsdale. So we just believe that the requested reduction in the side yard setback is excessive and unsafe.
Okay, thank you, sir. Does the committee have any questions of the speaker? There being none, I have one more person registered to speak, Dang Wan Oh. Dang Wan Oh, are you there?
Yeah, so, yes, I am. My name is Dang Wan Oh. I'm a resident of one thirty-nine Kingsdale Avenue. Yeah, Jim Cleary is actually my representative. So I think he could hear me, like, speak about our position. So I think, yeah, just, yeah, that's what, yeah.
Okay, thank you. Does the committee have any questions of the speaker? There being none, I'll go back to the agent. Mr. Davari, are you there?
I'm here.
You've heard the comments from the previous speakers, if you'd like to reply?
Yes, of course. I respect their concern. Just want to let them know regarding, if I'm not mistaken, owner of house number one thirty-nine, Kirsten was regarding the side yard setbacks. We provided the one point twenty-two meters. So I think if you have a look at the site plan, the distance to the property line is just zero point sixty-one. So we double up the distance, so we provided one point twenty-two meters. Still, we are going to ensure them that we have an engineer to visit the site, and if anything needs to be done from our side, the engineer will do that in the future, for sure, at the actual permit stage.
Okay, thank you, sir. Does the committee have any questions of the speaker? There being none, we'll take this into committee. Please note that variance number eleven on the public hearing notice has been changed. The proposed front yard landscaping area is forty-seven point three-nine percent. That variance has been deleted. Variance number twelve, which reads on the public hearing notice, "The proposed front yard soft landscaping is sixty-one point eight-three percent." That variance has been deleted. So could I get a motion on this revised application, please? Mr. Kidd?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I think the proposal, as amended, meets the purpose of the zoning bylaws, and I'd like to put forward a motion to accept the application as revised. Variance number eleven and number twelve to be deleted, and subject to the condition that the proposal be constructed substantially in accordance with the west and east elevation drawings. Submitted to the Committee of Adjustment, date stamped as received, April twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-one, and attached as attached as one and two to the planning staff report, also subject to forestry condition.
Someone to second Mr. Kidd's motion. Miss Sankar, second. All those in favor? The motion carries unanimously. Sir, your revised application has been unanimously approved, subject to city planning and urban forestry conditions.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, everybody.
We are now on item number thirty-three, one oh one Yorkview Drive. I have one person registered to speak. That is Mehdi Ajvan. Are you there?
Hi, my name is Nushin Mozafary. My colleague Mehdi couldn't make it for the presentation, so I'm going to represent our case at one oh one Yorkview. My name is Nushin, N-O-U-S-H-I-N, last name Mozafary, M-O-Z-A-F-A-R-Y.
Okay, thank you, madam. I just wanted to ask, if you've had the opportunity, I've had the opportunity to go through your file. I know there's a couple of city reports here. There's a report from Urban Forestry, a standard condition from them. City Planning, seventeenth of May report, they're recommending eliminating variance number five for the proposed rear deck projection. If that revision isn't made, then they're recommending refusal. If the revised application is approved, they're recommending it be subject to constructing the proposal substantially in accordance with the east and west elevation and site plan drawings submitted- in accordance with the east and west elevation and site plan drawings submitted to the committee and date stamped as received on May thirteenth, twenty-twenty-one, attached as attachments one, two, and three to their report. I just wanted to ask, madam, have you had the opportunity to read those reports?
Yes, sir. Uh, I have reviewed those reports and, uh, we, uh, we are going to eliminate variance number five for the deck projection. And, uh, we are absolutely okay that, uh, site plan and site elevations may be tied to the, uh, committee decision. Uh, we made all of these changes and back and forth with the planning. Uh, so we are absolutely okay with that.
Okay, and you're proposing to delete variance number five, which is the, uh, as recommended by planning? That's the rear deck?
Yes.
Okay, variance number five is deleted. Okay, thank you, madam. It's very clear what you're asking for in the variances. I'll just ask the committee. Uh, I'll just ask you, is there anything that you'd like to tell the committee that isn't contained in the material that we have before us this afternoon?
Uh, I think the application is very straightforward and it's very clear that, uh, what I'll be proposing. Uh, I can do a presentation, but if, uh, there is no question or everything is clear, uh, so no need.
Okay, thank you, madam. Does the committee have any questions of the speaker? Could I get a motion on this application, please? Ms. Sankar?
Yes, through you, Mr. Chair. I think that this is a straightforward application. And with the changes that were made by the applicant today, um, that we've already registered, I think it does meet the four tests. So I'll motion to approve this application. I'll make it subject to the changes, um, that, um, they've made by, um, eliminating variance number five, as well as the proposal be constructed substantially in accordance with the east and west elevation and site plan drawings submitted to committee and subject to forestry. And that's my motion.
Thank you, Ms. Sankar. Uh, someone to second that motion? Mr. Hunt seconds. All those in favor? Thank you. That motion carries. Madam, your application's been unanimously approved, subject to urban forestry and city planning conditions.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Item number thirty-four, two North Hills Terrace. I have one person registered to speak. Uh, June Liu, are you there?
Yes, I'm here.
Yes, thank you, madam. Can I get your full name and address, please?
My name is J-U-N-L-I-U, June Liu. I'm the owner of number two North Hill Terrace.
Okay, thank you, madam. I was just going through, uh, your file. I noticed there's a couple of reports on, on, uh, attached to your, your, uh, application. There's a standard condition from urban forestry. And there's also a report from City Planning dated the eighteenth of May. They appear to have no objections to your application, provided the rear yard setbacks for the building and deck be developed substantially in accordance with the site plan drawings attached to their report. Uh, I'm going through your, through your application here. It's pretty clear what you're asking for. Uh, I'll just ask, is there anything that you'd like to tell the committee that isn't in the material that the committee has before us this afternoon?
Uh, yes, I just want to mention that the item four has been removed. It's no longer needed.
Okay, let's just go back, let's go back a second. So you're proposing to delete variance number four?
Yes, that's right.
Okay, that, that variance is for the proposed front yard setback of seven point three-six meters and you're, and you are deleting that.
Yes, that's right. Uh, as a matter of fact, it's, uh, due to the, uh, nature of the land. Uh, we have a many pointed was, uh, longer than what city required. Only one point is slightly shorter. And then we had a special conversation is because the way they, how they measure it, now is no longer needed.
Okay, thank you very much, madam. Uh, just ask the committee, does the committee have any questions of the speaker? There being none, uh, note, uh, note committee that, uh, the applicant has deleted variance number four, which was dealt with the proposed front yard setback. So we're dealing with seven variances instead of eight. Can I get a motion on the revised application, please? Mr. Hunt?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, I would like to, uh, move approval of this, uh, application, uh, recognizing the deletion of variance four regarding minimum front setback. And that planning staff, uh, would attach the condition that the rear yard setbacks for building and deck be developed substantially in accordance with the site plan attached to their report and to the urban forestry requirements.
Thank you, Mr. Hunt. Someone to second that motion? Mr. Khan, thank you. All those in favor? The motion carries unanimously. Madam, your application's been unanimously approved. Your revised application's been unanimously approved, subject to urban forestry and city planning conditions.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, madam. Item number thirty-five, twenty-seven Cork Avenue. I have one person registered to speak, Victor Lan. Are you there, sir?
Yes, I'm here.
Yes, Mr. Lan, thank you very much. I note that you have one variance before us. It's just dealing with lot coverage. I'm looking at your file. There are no, uh, recommended conditions or staff comments. So I'm just going to ask, is there anything that, uh, I think it's pretty clear what you're, obviously very clear what you're asking for. I'll just ask, is there anything you'd like to tell the committee that isn't in the material that we have before us this afternoon?
No, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Does the committee have any questions of the speaker? There being none, could I get a motion, please? Ms. Sankar?
Hi, through you, Mr. Chair. I think this is pretty straightforward and minor. Um, I'll put forward a motion to approve as is. Thank you.
Thank you. Summon the second Ms. Sankar's motion. Mr. Kidd seconds. All those in favor? That motion carries. Thank you very much. Sir, your application's been unanimously approved without condition. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Item number thirty-six, forty-two Brookview Drive. I have two people registered to speak. And the agent is Sarah Ifra. Are you there?
I am.
Yes, thank you, madam. I'm just, uh, going through your report here, your file. I note there's a report from Transportation Services dated the eighteenth of May. They have no objection to your application, provided that you add a notation on the site plan, uh, stating that all portions of existing access driveways that are no longer required must be closed and restored with soft landscaping and full concrete curbs to the satisfaction of Transportation Services. Uh, did you have an opportunity to read that report, madam?
I did, yeah. And I have no issue.
Okay, thank you, madam. If you could, uh, we have one other person registered to speak on the application, madam. So if you could give us a brief presentation on what you see as the merits of your proposal?
Um, well, all we're looking to do really is have a driveway that's slightly wider. So technically, we have to stay in line with our one-car garage. But we wanted to get a little extra width there in order not to do that kind of car jockey that happens when you have one in the driveway and one in the garage. Um, it's a large family with a lot of young kids. So that's, that's really all we're asking is to go a little bit wider. And in general, in the neighborhood, um, there are driveways that are eighteen to twenty feet. So we didn't find it unreasonable to come and ask for this. Again, at the beginning, um, before this, the, our own property, so on the city portion, um, we're actually narrower. But it's just on our portion of the property. So past the property line, we widen out just kind of in front of the garage porch area.
Yes, I noticed, man, madam, when I was up there looking at the area on the weekend, that this type of double car driveway width isn't unusual on your street, is it?
No, exactly.
Okay, thank you. Does the, uh, I'll just, thank you, madam. Does the committee have any questions of the speaker? There being none, I'll go to the next person on, on the list. I have an Alex Roth. Are you there? Alex Roth, are you there?
Yes, I'm here. Hello.
Yes, Mr. Roth, could you, uh, can I get your full name and address, please?
Sure, I'm Alex Roth. I'm at forty Brookview Drive, which is the house to the south of the property in discussion.
Okay, sir, if you'd like to give us your thoughts on this application?
Um, I can, I, I can certainly understand why they want to, um, extend the driveway to, uh, make it easier to get into the garage. The driveway, the previous residence was on the other side of the house. Um, and so now this driveway will be adjacent to my driveway. And the material that has been shared, uh, is not clear to me, um, what there will be between the two driveways. And I'm concerned about either runoff or ice buildup or whatever. Um, and so I'd like that to be clarified. So I understand, um, exactly how, how those two, the two driveways are going to be lined up.
Okay, thank you, sir. Does the, uh, committee have any questions of the speaker? Madam, I'll go back to the agent. Are you there, madam?
If you could have staff put up the site plan, um, maybe that helps make it a little clearer.
Yes, if you could, please, you heard the comments from Mr. Roth. He was wondering if, if there's a separation between the two driveways.
So, so the answer is yes. If we kind of zoom in there to the driveway, Mr. Roth will see that his driveway is actually over our property. Um, but the in-between spot there between where our, our bubbled eighteen feet is and then, um, well, technically until our property line, we can have, um, well, the city's requesting that we do greenery. But if Mr. Roth takes a close look, he can see that his driveway actually goes onto our property. So the short answer is between the two, we will have soft landscaping. Um, the longer answer is we may have to look at Mr. Roth's driveway in order to give him enough soft landscaping that he feels comfortable that it's, uh, nice and green over there.
Okay, thank you, madam. So, uh, to, to summarize, that there is a, at least a, a four-foot separation between your driveway and his?
There's a four-foot separation between my driveway and my property line, but not to his driveway, since his is over my property line.
Okay, thank you. I'll, is there any questions of the speaker? Can I get a motion on this application, please? Ms. Sankar?
Yes, through you, Mr. Chair. I think this is pretty straightforward. I accept the explanations provided by the applicant here today. I motion to approve this application without condition.
Okay, just, there just was the, uh, before you vote on that, Ms. Sankar, there was that condition from Transportation Service to put the notation on the site plan? It's not a big deal. It's just a notation to go on the site plan that all portions of existing access driveways that are no longer required. Just that, that condition be added for Transportation Services?
Sure, Mr. Chair. I accept that. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, someone to second Ms. Sankar's motion? Mr. Khan seconds. All those in favor? The motion carries unanimously. Madam, your application's been unanimously approved, subject to Transportation Services condition.
Thank you.
Thank you. Now on item number thirty-seven, one thirty-seven Park Home Avenue. I have two people registered to speak. I have the agent, uh, Sisuo Wang. I'm sure I've mispronounced that. Are you there? Sisuo Wang, are you there? Sisuo Wang, are you there?
Hello?
Hello?
Hi, Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir. Can I get your full name and address, please?
Uh, yep, so my phone name is Sisuo Wang and I, I'm the owner agent for one thirty-seven Park Home Avenue. Uh, and the address is the same as above.
Okay, thank you, sir. I was just going through your file. I note there's a couple of reports, uh, attached to your application. There's a standard condition from urban forestry and a report from City Planning dated the seventeenth of May, which appears to have no objections, provided the proposal is constructed substantially in accordance with the west and east elevation drawings submitted to the committee as attachments one and two to their report. Have you had the opportunity to review that application, the review those, uh, reports, sir?
Uh, yes, Mr. Chair. I've, uh, read the comments, both the comments and the recommendations from, uh, City Planning Staff Report.
Okay, thank you, sir. Uh, we have one other person who's registered to speak on the application. So if you, uh, could give us a brief presentation on what you see as the merits of your proposal?
Uh, sure. Uh, thanks again, uh, Mr. Chair and members of the committee. Um, so our plan is to construct the, uh, two-story single-family residence, uh, in this beautiful neighborhood. Uh, so regarding the variances, um, for variances number two and number three, uh, those are related to the sidewall height. Um, and the variance is mainly to accommodate the dormer windows on the side walls. Um, and we try to lower the cell height to the extent possible. Um, so, uh, as we can see, uh, of the total length of the roof line, uh, only a very small portion of the side exterior wall, um, is actually about the, uh, bylaw requirement of seven point five meters. Um, so if we do a calculation, approximately, uh, ninety-three percent of the west sidewall and then eighty-eight percent of the east sidewall are actually within the requirement, uh, required seven point five, uh, meters. And, and then the rest of the sidewall is actually at seven point two-four meters, uh, which is actually within the, uh, bylaw requirement. Um, so, uh, and we'll ensure these will be, uh, developed substantially in accordance to the, uh, west and east elevation drawings. Um, and, uh, as for the other variances, uh, variance number one, uh, is the lot coverage, uh, area. Uh, and we have a variance of one point four percent, uh, which are deemed, uh, which we believe is minor. Uh, and then number four is, uh, zero point zero eight meter variance on the finish for, first floor height. Uh, and then, uh, number five is a variance of zero point two-two, uh, meters on the building height, uh, which is actually under the, uh, legacy of law. Um, so overall, uh, we believe that the general intent and the purpose of the bylaw is maintained. Uh, and the variance requested here are minor in nature. Um, thanks, thanks again, Mr. Chair and members of the committee.
Thank you, sir. Does the committee have any questions of the speaker? There being none, we'll go to the next person on the list. I have a Rupesh Shayamala. Are you there? Rupesh Shayamala?
Uh, Mr. Chair, it does not appear to, that they are present. Search first name, last name, and by phone number.
Thank you very much, Mr. Khan. Okay, we'll go back to, uh, Mr. Wang. Uh, is there, does the committee have any questions of the speaker? There being none, could I get a motion on this application, please? Mr. Kidd?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I, I think this is a modest, uh, proposal that, uh, uh, meets the four tests for minor variance. I'd like to put forward a proposal, uh, to accept the application, subject to the condition that the proposal be constructed substantially in accordance with the west and east elevation drawings submitted to the Committee of Adjustment, attached as attachment one and two to the, uh, staff, uh, planning report dated, uh, May seventeen and subject to forestry condition as well.
Thank you, Mr. Kidd. Someone to second that motion? Ms. Sankar seconds. All those in favor? That motion carries. Uh, sir, your application's been unanimously approved, subject to urban forestry and city planning conditions.
Thank you, and have a great day.
Thank you, sir. Item number thirty-eight, three ninety-two Kiwattan Avenue. I have one person registered to speak. And that is a John Hatch. Are you there, sir?
Yes, I am.
Yes, Mr. Hatch, thank you. I just wanted to go through, uh, went through your file. I note that there's a report from Transportation Services dated the seventeenth of May. Uh, they had no objection to their proposal for front yard parking. It's already licensed. So it's pretty clear what you're asking for in the variances before us, uh, seven of them. And I'm just asking, uh, is there anything that you'd like to tell the committee that isn't contained in the material that we have before us this afternoon?
Absolutely. Um, so there's only one, which is the variance number, um, sorry, uh, variance.
I'm sorry?
Variance for the part, variance number six for the, uh, minimum parking space. Um, that's no longer required because during the course of the application, we did manage to get the front yard parking, uh, permit. And therefore that variance isn't necessary.
Okay, so variance numbers, you're saying you don't need variance number six anymore?
No, we don't.
Okay, it's, it's eliminated then?
Yes, please.
Okay, six is deleted. Okay, thank you. Uh, anything else they want to add?
Uh, and then I believe I, I covered most of the, uh, most of the information in the supporting material. Um, it's clear that we're only asking for point five. It's clear that we're only asking for point five-six over the depth, point four-four, or point four, or four percent over the GFA allowance. The height is in, is matching the two neighbors on either side. And in the supporting material, you can see the photos of the subject house, and we are going to be proposed essentially in line with the two neighboring houses in terms of heights. And, and if you look in the research as well on the following pages, you can see that the street is regularly requesting for lengths or lengths and depths in excess of nineteen meters, densities over eighty percent, and heights well over nine meters. So we believe that it's minor, well, and keeping within the, within the street and the neighborhood.
Thank you, sir. Does the committee have any questions of the speaker? There being none, could I get a motion on this application, please? Mr. Khan?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. There's one question that I would like to ask, but anyhow, I'm making my motion. Since transportation variance number six has been removed, their road will be redundant then. And therefore, after having Transportation Services removed, so I think there is nothing else, and there's no staff recommendation. So on the basis of that, I think it's a minor variances. After removing number six, I move that this application be approved with no conditions.
Thank you, Mr. Khan. Someone to second that motion? Ms. Sankar seconds. All those in favor? That motion carries unanimously. Sir, your revised application's been unanimously approved without condition. Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. We're now on item number thirty-nine, five oh eight St. Germain Avenue. I have one person registered to speak. That is a Randall Dickey. Are you there, sir?
My name is Ali Malik Sadeh, and I am the applicant for this application. There was some miscommunication on this application, so Mr. Randall supposed to represent this, and then now I am doing that. So my name is Ali Malik Sadeh, from Urban Escape Architects.
Okay, thank you, sir. I just wanted to ask, have you had, I've gone through your file. I note there's a report from city planning dated the fourteenth of May of this year, and it's recommended refusing the variance for the proposed number of stories, which was three stories, I believe. Yeah, which variance number six. And they're,
Yes.
They're indicating that should committee approve the app, the revised application staff recommends that the property be developed substantially in accordance with the site plan drawing submitted to the Committee of Adjustment, attached as attachment number one to this report. So I'm just going to ask now, sir, were you, have you seen that report?
Yes, Mr. Chair. I've seen that report, and I had a chance to talk to the planner for this application. And we had the discussion, and I had another project, actually, I can say another two projects in the same area. One of them was two forty-five Haddington Avenue. This is just south of this property, same situation.
Sir, back up, back up a minute. Are you proposing to delete variance number six, which is the proposed number of stories is three?
No, Mr. Chair.
Okay, so you want, you want to continue, you want to keep it at three stories?
Yes.
Okay, all right. So then make a, make a presentation to the committee on why we should support your application.
Okay. Can I ask if they can just present the drawing that submitted to the, for the Committee of Adjustment application, if they can? And then if they can go to the page, page A two point one? So, Mr. Chair, as the, as you see on this front elevation, usually as a pattern of the development in this area, the houses on this size, like a forty-foot lot, they are usually garage class two-story above the garage. And as the standard, the garage is not counted as a story, so they are all going to be two-story-high, single-family home. In this case, we are excavating under the garage. This is very technical issue that the planning of Committee of Adjustment, they are not adjusting their policy on that. So on this case, we are excavating under the garage for the additional parking space. It's not habitated space in this case, and it's just a car lift going down to the basement, and just for the extra car. As you see on this elevation, on the right side of the elevation, and I can say seventy-five percent to eighty percent of the whole house is a two-story, and then comply with the seven point two meters height as they're required by the bylaw. The only area that is exceeding from the height is the, the story above the garage. So by the definition of the bylaw, if you are excavating under the garage, they take the garage as the first story, and then because of that, they are taking the two-story above the garage as the second and then third story. So it's not because of I have the, and we are proposing the story that above the garage. It's because of the excavation of the garage. So if I'm going to eliminate the variance number six, and then by removing the garage from the basement, I'm going to comply with the definition of the bylaw and the policy. And then the shape of the building and then the height is not going to change. So on the other words, the, the variance is, doesn't have any impact to the height of the building. And it's just the definition of the garage and excavation under the garage is causing these variance. The rest of the house is all two-story. If I can ask if you can show the last page of the submission, I really appreciate. So as you see, this is just the schematic section of the, what happening on the side of the garage. So as you see, the, we have the, in the basement, which is under the garage, we have the car lift, we have the garage, and then a study room and bedroom above it. By removing the basement and the car lift, there is no change on whatever is happening above the ground, and there is no impact of the, the height of the building and then the variance at all. So I just wanted to bring this one to your attention. If I can have also the, the drawing number, A one point one? So the other variance that the, the planning department was suggesting to be tied to the application and then in case of the approval. So the building length is, what we proposing is only happening underground and then in the basement. So under the rear deck or rear patio, I should say, we have some amenities that is working for the outdoor pool, proposed outdoor pool.
Summarize, please?
Yes, so the actual building is, building length is eleven, eighteen meters, and they are just slightly over seventeen meters as the requirement by bylaw. And then the twenty-two meters is all underground, and then there is no impact to the, to the building length. Thank you.
Thank you. Does the committee have any questions of the speaker? Could I get a motion on this application, please? Mr. Kidd?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I, I accept the explanation given by the, the agent. And as a result, I'd like to put forward a motion to accept the application, subject to the condition that the property be developed substantially in accordance with the site plan drawing submitted to the Committee of Adjustment, attached as attachment one to this report.
Thank you, Mr. Kidd. Someone to second that motion? That motion does not carry. Can I get another motion, please? Ms. Sankar?
Yeah, through you, Mr. Chair. I, I, I've seen the drawings, and I have counted the levels, and I, I do believe that there is merit to what staff is proposing. And so for that reason, I'll motion to approve it, but I will follow strictly what the staff recommendation says, and that is refusing variance number six, and that the property be developed substantially in accordance with the site plan drawing submitted to the Committee of Adjustments. That's my motion.
Someone to, someone to second Ms. Sankar's motion? Mr. Kidd, Mr. Khan seconds. All those in favor? Mr. Hunt, are you in favor? Yes, thank you. Opposed? Mr. Kidd dissenting. Sir, your application has been approved with the exception of the variance relate, variance number six related to the third story, which has been refused. Okay, thank you very much, sir. And it's subject to city.
Thank you.
Thank you. We're now on item number forty-five, Cleveland Street. I have one person registered to speak.
Yes, sir.
And I have the agent, Shahid Nanavati. Are you there?
Yes, sir, I'm right here.
Okay, thank you, sir. I just was going through your file. I note that there's one staff comment in place here, and that's from Transportation Services. They have a report of the eighteenth of May. They indicate that they have no objection to your front yard parking. They indicate it's already licensed. I just wanted to ask if you had,
Yes, sir.
opportunity, if you've had an opportunity to read that report?
Yes, sir, we have the license now. It was basically transferred from the mother to the son. So we have it now, and we'd like to drop that variance.
Okay, thank you, sir. Pretty clear what you're asking for in the five variances we have before us. I'm just going to ask, is there anything you'd like to tell the committee that isn't contained in the material we have before us this afternoon?
No, sir, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Does the committee have any questions of the speaker? There being none, could I get a motion on this application, please? Mr. Khan?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have, Transportation has no objection, but they are making a note that the license renewal requirement by the owner from permit and enforcement section must be obtained by the applicant. An architect's letter of March twenty-six, twenty-twenty-one explains variance number one and number two, four and five. Minor variances complied with the zoning bylaw. Intent is met, therefore move for approval with Transportation's condition.
Thank you. Someone to second Mr. Khan's motion? Mr. Hunt seconds. All those in favor? That motion carries. Sir, your application's been unanimously approved without condition. Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you.
Okay. Ladies and gentlemen, I think we'll take a little five-minute break, and then we'll come back. Ladies and gentlemen, committee's back in session. We are on item number forty-one, seventy-six Glenlong Avenue. I have six speakers on this application. The agent is Amerin Zabzuni. Are you there?
Yes, I am. Good afternoon, Mr. Chair and committee members.
Yes, thank you, sir. Before we start, I was going through your file. There's a report from city planning dated the fourteenth of May. They appear to have no objection to your application, provided that the property is developed substantially in accordance with the site plan drawing submitted to the committee, attached as attachment one to their report. Sir, if you'd like to, to their report. Sir, if you'd like to, uh, make a presentation to, uh, the committee and the audience with respect to what you see as the merits of your proposal?
Yes, happy to. Um, my name is Marin Zabzuni at eleven forty, the Queensway. So we're here to propose a two-story detached dwelling and, uh, to go over the variances. Starting with items one, two, three, and four, the, these have to do with side yard setbacks. So the proposed dwelling, uh, proposes an east side yard setback of one point three meters, one point five-three meters, and proposed west side yard setback of one point five-two meters, where the minimum required is one point eight. This is a, quite a common request in North York and fits the neighborhood and the general, uh, allowed and proposed and approved side yard setbacks. And this also, we have this triggered on the front porch, which is one point five-two meters from west side lot line, and the proposed rear deck is one point fifty-three meters from the east side, uh, lot line. And the reason being, the platforms are in line with the proposed sidewalls and thus triggering these variances. So we believe these are minor in nature. Uh, item five speaks to the building height variance. So the proposed building height is seven point eighty-five meters, where the maximum for a flat roof is seven point two meters. Now, if you could look at the frontal elevation, you'll see that the majority of the roof height is at actually seven point sixty-four meters, uh, whereas a portion of the roof in the middle is slightly higher in order to add some dimension to the design. And you would notice this on the elevations at the front and rear. So what we did is we made sure to sink the house in the ground as much as possible in order to reduce the massing and building height. And, um, you know, we're working with a flat roof variance, and we believe this is quite minor in nature. Um, items six and seven speak to building length and building depth. So the building length is nineteen point fifty-one meters and building depth is nineteen point fifty meters, essentially the same. So if you look at the site plan and floor plans, essentially the majority of the proposed dwelling actually complies with a lot building length of sixteen point seventy-six meters. Uh, the proposed variances are only triggered due to the small centralized portion where the front study is located and the rear centralized portion where the stairs are located. These are highlighted in our supporting material on our site plan, and essentially this is what triggers, uh, these variances. We aim to add some substance, make it a bit more dynamic, so it's not just a, you know, box or flat kind of wall, flush wall. Um, in order to improve curb appeal and add some architectural features to the dwelling, these portions are further away from the side property lines and provide very little impact to, uh, the neighboring properties. So we feel this is, uh, minor, uh, when reviewed based on its merits. In regards to item number eight, uh, there's a little discrepancy of one centimeter for the front yard setback. We actually would like to remove this variance. This is not necessary. And, uh, item number nine permitted lot coverage. We're proposing thirty-five point thirty-nine percent due to some of the overhangs where thirty-five percent is allowed. This is very minor. It has more to do with the curb appeal, the architectural features and design. Uh, item number ten speaks to the balcony area. We also request to remove this variance as the homeowners do not require it, uh, after having discussions with them. So the homeowners have lived in the area for about twelve years. They're a growing family, and this is a custom home made for them. They want to grow their family here. Um, they have two kids and have spoken to a lot of the neighbors in the area. We've obtained and submitted ten letters of support. Uh, homeowners has, have also talked to the counselor and, uh, gained their support. And we also attached some photos of similar builds, a chart of similar variances. And we feel overall, we're only asking for a few variances, um, that we believe is minor, and we do believe it's very fitting in the neighborhood and it does meet the four tests. Let me know if you have any questions. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, sir. Uh, we'll go to the first person I have on our list. I have a Rosella Motola. Are you there? Rosella Motolo, uh, Motola, are you there?
Mr. Chair, they are not present.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Clapp. Next person on the list, I have a Danny or Antonieta Sitter or Kitter?
Mr. Chair, they're also not present.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Clapp.
Same can be said about the DPO Litos.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
I have a Dennis Infanti. Are you there? Mr. Infanti, are you there?
Good afternoon. Yes, I am here.
Yes, sir. Can I get your full name and address, please?
Sure. It's Dennis Infanti, seventy-two Glenlong Avenue.
Okay, if you could give us your thoughts on this application?
Sure. Um, you know, I'm not opposed in any way to building or any, uh, regentrification of the area.
Sir, it's hard to hear you. Are you, uh, speaking with the speakerphone on?
One second.
That's a little better.
Is that better?
That's better.
Okay, sorry. Uh, yeah, totally not opposed to regentrification of the area and I agree that a lot of these are not major. I know the concerns of some of the neighbors. Um, I should say, I'm at seventy-two Glenlong, which is, uh, two doors away. Um, and I believe some of the people that you called out are actually online or trying to get online. Uh, the Dipolitos, for sure, are there. Um, the height variance was one of the, the major concerns. Uh, we've expressed that in our letter and also drafted one of the letters that's on there. Uh, the other concern that we had was the, I guess, the deck and, and the overhanging balcony and the depth that that comes and the impact to the, the overall hardscaping of the property as opposed to softscaping and the total coverage. Those were, were major. Uh, I think anyways, in terms of how far back the, the covered deck would protrude into the, uh, into the backyard and, and how that impacts the site lines and the privacies, the privacy of the direct, uh, direct neighbors. Um, I would add that in the collection of the letters of support, most of those letters that are provided, uh, are not from the directly surrounding neighbors, but basically another block, uh, outside of the actual street. In fact, being of the direct surrounding neighborhood, um, none of us were actually consulted. I can speak to myself. I was not contacted or any sale. The, um, the letters that were signed, um, are basically on the, on a different block along the same street. And I understand that that's not necessarily, um, indicative of the, the expression of the direct neighbors. Uh, the other point that I would like to add is, you know, he provided some pictures of, uh, of surrounding properties for, for support. Mine is one of those properties, and I can tell you, yes, we did build from scratch in the neighborhood, and we've been here for a long time. But you can check the records. There is not one request from my property, uh, for any adjustments or, uh, exceptions to the committee's, uh, rules. We, we didn't have to go. We stayed within the boundaries proposed for the neighborhood.
Okay, thank you, sir. Does the committee have any questions to the speaker? Being none, we'll go to the next person on the list.
Mr. Chair, if I may, sorry, I've been advised that, uh, Mr. DPO Lito is, I butchered that, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Is present?
Thank you, Mr. Clapp. I have, uh, David Dipolito. Are you there, sir?
Yep, yes, I'm here. I'm sorry I got cut off earlier. I apologize.
Thank you, sir. If you could, uh, give us your thoughts on this application?
Yeah, my name is David Dipolito. I, I live at, uh, eighty Glenlong Avenue. Um, so our, our family shares the same concerns that was previously mentioned with the proposed, uh, dwelling here. Um, yeah, in, in, in isolation, the variances don't seem to be major, but in, in combination, they are quite substantial, and they don't really conform, in my opinion, to what has been allowed on the street. Um, particularly, my home, which is two houses over, um, I, I have a, I have a significant, uh, concern with the amount of sunlight that's going to be, I, I believe, uh, affected by this home being built, uh, which is specifically the variances five, six, and seven, which address both height and depth. The depth of this property seems to be significantly, um, further back than the rest of the neighborhood that's, uh, already built pretty large homes. Um, Glenlong Avenue already benefits from atypical lot sizes in comparison to other lots in the area. Um, the municipal zoning already permits for pretty sizable residences, you know, exceeding thirty-five hundred square feet. Um, so in my opinion, you know, we've got minor variances here that should be considered by the committee for sure. Um, but they shouldn't directly impact the privacy of, of the neighborhood and particularly homes that have already been built there. Uh, perhaps the question of the committee is how big is too big, and I mentioned that in my letter. Um, and if we continue to overextend, as I believe this is, um, you know, now there's ten, there was ten variances, now there's nine. Uh, you know, homes are going to continue to increase in size, and, you know, we're going to lose green spaces, which I know it's a huge thing for the municipality these days. Um, and, you know, our vital sun exposure is going to obviously reduce as well. Um, so we're, we're hoping that the committee at least looks at that. And I have, you know, no qualms against the building of this home, and I wish them well, but I just wish that they would take it to account what the immediate neighbors', um, feelings are as opposed to ones that are down the street, as mentioned. And if I do state for the record, um, you know, we, we love the neighborhood. We've been here for a long time. But those neighbors that suggested that they can, they concede or they consent are relatively the same family. Um, so in my opinion, they're not directly impacted, and they are further down the street, as the previous fellow mentioned. So I believe the committee should know then and be fully aware that it's not the direct neighbors that are being, uh, uh, consulted. Also, Antonetta Chitter, um, is online. She's on a telephone call. Um, so I don't think she could register her name. So she is on, uh, as well on this call. So I can listen to her, uh, viewpoint because she's the direct neighbor, and I think she should be heard as well.
Okay, thank you. Does the committee have any questions to the speaker?
Welcome.
And being none, we'll go to, uh, last person on the list. I have a Deborah Gallego, Gallegio.
Hi, hello?
Yes, thank you, madam. Can I get your full name and address?
Yes, it's Deborah Gallego, and I'm at eighty-seven Playfair Avenue, directly behind the, uh, the property in discussion.
Okay, thank you. If you'd like to give us your thoughts on this application?
Sure. So, um, as I mentioned, I live directly behind the property. I've lived here for over fifteen years, and then my intent is to remain here in my home for many more years. Um, it's a fabulous neighborhood we're in, and, uh, I'm, I really appreciate any upgrades that people are wanting to make, uh, to the houses, to the properties in the area. And I really do value the relationships I have with, with my neighbors and, uh, new neighbors coming in. So I want to start by saying I am happy to hear that a new home is, a new house is being built in the neighborhood. Having said that, I have some serious concerns, uh, regarding the, again, many minor variances which do add up to be, um, quite major. Um, specifically number five regarding the proposed height being more than a meter higher than what's permitted. Number six regarding the length of the, of the building, more than two and a half meters, um, longer than what's permitted. And number seven, the depth of the building. Um, if I could just confirm, number ten has been withdrawn?
No.
So, I'm sorry. What was withdrawn? I heard there was a variance that was withdrawn at the beginning?
No, I don't understa-, I don't believe that he was withdrawing any, uh, any variances. Variance number-
Okay, I misunderstood. I, I misun-, so variance number ten is still on the table?
Hold on, we're going to call the, the agent back up so you can clarify what he-
Okay. Well, okay.
Okay, just a second, madam. We'll come back to you.
Hello. Uh, number eight and ten are actually withdrawn.
Mr. Zeb-
Number eight?
And ten are withdrawn.
Madam, please wait.
Yes, number eight and number ten are withdrawn.
Okay, eight and number ten are eliminated. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, number eight-
Correct.
The front yard setback and the proposed area of the platform above the second story. So there, that one's deleted as well. Eight and number ten.
Correct.
Okay, all right.
Correct.
Okay, thank you, madam. Uh, if you'd like to continue?
Yes, thank you. Okay, well, I'm glad to hear that number ten has been withdrawn. In my opinion, that was an absurd, um, request. The current four by four meters or four meters squared, and they were asking for more than double that on the rooftop, I think, was, was, uh, pretty, um, I don't know, it was just quite the, quite the request. So, um, I think the current lot right now is, uh, probably a good four feet higher than mine. Um, so right now, there's a modest dwelling on the property, and as modest as it is, they already tower over us on their second floor. So it's a one and a half story, and where they are, they're already, um, towering over us. So I can imagine when this house is, if, if these mine, if these minor variances go through, we'd be, um, quite claustrophobic in my yard and, and in my bedroom, which faces the back of the home. Um, I think that it's clear, as some of the other speakers mentioned, that, um, that the lots on Glenlong are, are, um, quite large and, and they're, they're wonderful and can, um, allow dwellings that are more than comfortable in terms of size without having to allow any variances. Um, I'd like to remind everyone that, uh, bylaws are put in place for a reason, and with a lot that size, I think, um, I think a more than a comfortable family home can be built, um, by, by, um, respecting the bylaws that are there. Um, I'd also like to mention that I did receive a letter regarding this meeting, as I guess I'm within the sixty meters, um, that are, that's required to, to be notified. But I was not, um, contacted by, um, by the current owners, uh, asking if I'd support this. Um, and again, I am directly impacted being, being behind them. Um, yeah, again, I'd like to, I, I just reiterate what the previous two speakers said. I agree with them one hundred percent. Um, this building can be, can be built, the home can be made without infringing on anyone else and without having to, um, allow minor variances that add up to a major variance. Thank you.
Okay. Madam, I just want, I just wanted to ask, madam, what's the distance from your, the back wall of, of your, your building to the property line?
Oh, that's a good question. Um, I'm guessing approximately twenty feet, twenty-five feet perhaps?
And, and, and what's the dis-, what's the distance from the back wall of this proposed building to, to, to your, to your rear property line?
You know, I, I really wish I could read the numbers on, on, uh, the paper that was sent to me, but I am not able to make them out.
Okay. And, and you didn't look at the file that's in, with the committee?
No, I don't have the number on me right now.
Okay, thank you. Does the, uh, that's our last speaker. I'll go back to the, um, agent, Mr. Zabzuni. Are you there?
Mr. Chair, we've been advised that there is one more deputant. They've called in with a different number from what they registered with, so they are now online.
Which one? Do you know which one it is?
We'll find out.
Hi, good afternoon. It's Antonetta Sitter. My sincere apologies. I couldn't take the day off, so I had to do it from the work phone.
Okay, thank you, madam. Can I get your full name and address, please?
Yes, it's Antonetta Sitter from seventy-eight Glenlong Avenue, the property right next door to seventy-six.
Okay.
On the west side.
If you'd like to give us your thoughts on this application?
Uh, well, I could hear everybody else's, so I don't really want to waste everybody's time. I did submit the, uh, a, a, a full report. My biggest concern, like everybody else's, is the depth and the height. Um, I don't believe they're minor. I've lived there over eighteen years. Um, like my neighbor David said, all the consent letters are from everybody but directly in, being impacted around the new proposed property. We don't, you know, it's nice that he's going to build, but, you know, staying within the variances so that everybody around him isn't affected. Like, we all have rights to use our backyards, enjoy the sunlight, um, privacy, you know, everything else that's been mentioned. So I'm not going to repeat everything, but, um, I thought I'd just throw those things out there also. And I don't think the build is appropriate for the neighborhood. I've also built, he submitted my picture, but when I built back in two thousand and three, again, we stayed within variances.
Okay, thank you, madam. Does the committee have any questions to the speaker? And being none, I'll go back to the agent, Mr. Zabzuni. Are you there?
Turns, um, in regards to building height, uh, again, this is triggered because it's a flat roof, uh, type of, uh, house and building. So it's more restrictive than a sloped roof. If we were to propose a, as of right, slope roof, the building height would be significantly higher, uh, without requesting a variance. We believe having the home close to grates sinking into the ground with a flat roof provides the least amount of impact to neighbors. And I would request a review that based on this merit rather than just reading a variance of what's allowed for a flat roof and what we're proposing. And again, the, even on that proposal, the highest point of that flat roof is in the middle, which has even further reduced impact to both neighbors. And again, the even on that proposal, the highest point of that flat roof is in the middle, which has even further reduced impact to both neighbors. Um, and in terms of building length, the majority of the home does comply with building length and building depth. The portions that trigger this extra length is at the front portion of the house and the, in the middle and the rear portion centralized in the middle that are both quite far away from both neighbors. Uh, the other variances are very minor and very common in the neighborhood. We've attached photos of similar bills, similar massing. And uh, the letters of support did come from the same street, Glenlong Avenue. It's not as if uh, he went two, three du- blocks down the street. Homeowners have lived there for, uh, around the area for the twelve years and their parents even longer. So they have spoken to neighbors, even the direct neighbor, twice because in the end, they don't just want to build a home and get this approved, they want to get along with their neighbors. So we went in, relatively minor with these variances. Um, and the homeowner wants to build a family there. They want to get along with everybody. It's not as if uh, it's just a build and it doesn't matter. That's why they made this effort. We made this effort. A planning has no objections with our proposal because they can see that it's quite minor. And we believe sincerely that this proposal meets the four tests and fits the neighborhood and that the variances are quite minor uh when taken into consideration and based on its merits. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Sir, I just wanted to ask with respect to the building height, which seems to be a big issue here. Uh, your building height is technically capped under the bylaw because it's a flat roof building, correct?
Correct.
If, if it was, you're proposing seven point eight five meters, which is about eighteen inches more than what's allowed under the bylaw. If it was a peaked roof building, a standard conventional peaked roof building, how tall could you go?
It would be significantly higher at about ten meters.
Yes, so it would be like three meters taller.
Exactly, as of right.
Okay, thank you. Does, does the committee have any questions to the speaker? Being none, could I get a motion on this revised application, please? Please note that variance number eight, which reads the proposed front yard setback is eight point three one meters, that's been deleted. Uh, variance number ten, the proposed area of each platform at or above the second story is nine point three four meters. That variance has been deleted. So we're dealing with eight variances, not ten. So could I get a motion on this revised application, please, Ms. Sankar?
Yes, through you, Mr. Chair. You know, I've listened intently to what the applicants have said as well as the um persons who are uh i- in opposition. And I believe that based on the evidence that the uh applicant has provided, as well as his own uh testimonies uh of this, I accept his explanations and I believe that looking at this, this is to me, this, this application does meet the four tests with the changes he made. So I'm putting forward a motion to approve this application. I'll make it subject to the changes he made here today, eliminating variances eight and ten and that the uh property be developed substantially in accordance with the site plan drawing submitted to the Committee of Adjustment. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sankar. Someone to second that motion? Mr. Hunt, seconds. All those in favor? That motion carries unanimously. Sir, your revised application's been unanimously approved, subject to city planning conditions. Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you. Thank you.
Our next application is sixty and seventy Playfair Avenue and twenty-five Good Shepherd Court. I have seven people registered to speak. The agent is a Joe Guzzo. Are you, Joe Guzy, are you there, sir?
Uh, I am. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you, sir. Uh, can I get your full name and address, please?
So it's a Joe Guzy, uh G U Z Z I, uh, and I'm a planner with Dillon Consulting. And our office address is two thirty-five Yorkland Boulevard.
Okay, thank you, sir. I noticed there's a, a number of reports filed on the, on your application. There's one from Transportation Services dated the fourteenth of May. Uh, they indicate they have no objections to your application. Parking supply is sufficient as described in the transportation impact study that was submitted. There is a uh city planning report dated the eleventh of May, twenty twenty-one. They have no objections to your application. Your uh, the site is currently under the site plan approval process. And we have a report, a letter from Counselor Cole dated the nineteenth of May. And he's requesting that the application be deferred so that they can have a public meeting. Uh, would you like to defer the application, sir, or would you like it heard today?
Um, we would like to proceed with the application today. Um, we have a, yeah, we have reviewed the, the objections. Um, and we conclude that uh they're very well articulated and reported on record. And that the residents have already met with the counselor.
Sir, back up. So you would like the application heard today? That's all I need to know. Yes or no?
Yes, please.
Thank you. Uh, we have other persons registered to speak, sir, so if you could make a presentation to the committee on what you see as the merits of your proposal?
Sure, um, the, the application uh is for four variances. The four variances will facilitate the renewal of the school campus. Uh, the variances that are being sought are uh to permit the school use on the northern portion of the property. Uh, two variances are for height, to allow a height of fourteen meters and uh an additional story, as well as a reduction in parking. Um, we have reviewed all of the comments and I'd like to speak uh briefly to some of the issues that were raised. Uh, regarding um school, the height of the building, I like to just indicate that um, the, the property has been designed in a way that uh incorporates mitigated measures to help reduce the impact of height to the residents to the west. Uh, the building um has been set back much larger than is required in the bylaw. The bylaw requires a three-meter setback and we've provided generous ten-meter setback. That would allow with the, sorry, that will permit uh mitigation measures uh both in terms of setback, but also in terms of ability to, to landscape and, and, and fencing. Um, also the property uh then tears back to two, to two stories to the rear. So therefore, the impact of the additional story is not for the full length of the building, but is only for a part of the building. Uh, further, um, we also recognize that the height variant appears larger than it is because of the way it is measured and the grades on the property. The prop is quite large and therefore the, the grades change substantially. And also would like to note that the, the properties to the west are also uh have a higher grade of almost one point five meters and that helps with the mitigation of, of that. Um, there were some concerns raised with regards to shadow impact. And we have submitted a sun shade study, which uh indicates that between the hours of nine eighteen to the rest of the day, there are, there are no shadow impacts on the adjacent properties. And also with the issue of height or hu- or, sorry, the issue of parking, uh, the reduction from one to one ninety-five to one fifty-six is substantiated by our parking study, which is based on need. Uh, the, there's a need of only a hundred and forty-nine parking spaces. We provide a hundred and fifty-six parking spaces on site. Um, because we satisfied the need of the school, we don't anticipate any off-site parking issues. Also, the site has been designed in a way so that not all parking, uh, sorry, not all access to the site is from Playfair. Some of it is from the Good Shepherd Court. Hundred and thirteen spaces from the Good Shepherd Court, which uh will accommodate staff parking. Thirty-eight spaces uh will be accessed from Playfair, uh, which will be for student parking as well as drop-off. Uh, we believe that the site has been respectfully designed to mitigate uh any impact to the surrounding uh areas. Um, and we believe, as articulated in our submission with our application, that the variances do meet the four tests of the Planning Act. They're minor and desirable, given the context of this neighborhood. Um, and uh we respectfully request that it be approved.
Okay, thank you, sir. I just had a couple of questions. I was reading through the material in your file and it uh indicated in one of your presentations that there were community meetings were held on the tenth of February twenty twenty and the ninth of March twenty twenty. I was curious, is where were these meetings held and how many people attended?
Okay, so I um, these were uh meetings dealt with a previous proposal. Um, I also have our architect on, on the call here. Um, and perhaps she might be able to uh explain that and also maybe uh explain the context of, of how the site um design has evolved.
Okay, well.
Would you like that to happen?
Just with, with respect to that issue of the community consultation, if you don't know the answer, if you want, you'll all come back to it at the, at the end after the speakers have come to and you can address that when you've gotten that information. And what I'll do now is I'll move on to our list of speakers. And we'll start with, I have a Maureen or a Maureen O'Shaughnessy. I think she's, is she attached with you, sir?
Yes, I'm Maureen O'Shaughnessy, CSNP Architects.
I'll go to the next person on the list. I have a George Gallego from, uh, are you there, sir?
I am indeed.
Yes, hello, can I?
Hello, can I be heard?
Please.
Sure, my name is George Gallego, eighty-seven Playfair Avenue.
Okay, thank you, sir. If you'd like to give us your thoughts on this application?
Yes, I'm asking for a deferral of this meeting. Uh, I would contest that this, this, this project is not
Hello, sir.
Undesirable is actually for the resident.
Sir, you're breaking up on us.
I apologize. Can you hear me now?
No, go, can you try, can you keep, keep going?
I will move. I will move locations possibly. My internet will be better. Um, I would like to contest the fact and say that this, this project is actually undesirable and very concerning for the residents of the neighborhood. I live at and this community and this is one of a long series of proposals that this community has suffered under. Um, I'm asking for the deferral because there is a changing of zoning for this project. There's actually a changing of zoning. This is a residential area and there's a, there is a, an asking, a request for changing of zoning. Um, the transportation impact study was also done in two thousand and six and I would suggest that it's slightly outdated. We are five years after and um it would be, it would be um, I think, reasonable to say that that's slightly outdated. The February twenty twenty didn't have community representation or involvement in the meeting, that meeting. And um, I'm also concerned, as many of my resident, fellow residents are, with the narrowing of the street. It will affect the entire neighborhood. Uh, from garbage collection to uh ambulance and emergency services. We have Villa Colombo on our street, which is a residential home for the elderly. So no clearing will be affected. These are all things to consider, as well as the height, the size of this project, the rerouting of traffic, infrastructure. These are all concerns that I, as well as my fellow neighbors have uh in regards to this project. This is something monumentous that is going to restructure and permanently alter the um landscape and the quality of life that we all enjoy in this neighborhood. So I would ask for a deferral so that we can organize further. Uh, when I say we, I mean the, the neighbors and residents that are directly impacted. I live at eighty-seven Playfair. I did not receive any letter, any notice of this meeting. Luckily, my neighbors and we are in communication, we are organizing and I was known that way. Otherwise, I would have not had any inkling that this meeting was happening. This is very concerning, considering the size, the magnitude, the scope of this project. It is very concerning that this is being done without the full consult of the entire community. I do not know how this can be done. So I really, really, really ask and am strongly requesting that this be deferred. We have asked our city councilor, councillor, Mr. Cole. He has submitted a letter on our behalf. We have met with him and he does also support our request to defer this matter. This is not something to be taken lightly and I'll leave it at that. I'm sure there's others that would like to speak. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, sir. Go to the next personal on the list. I have Pino or Lucy. Pino Esposito or Lucy, Luc- Lucy Sano. Are you there?
Sure. Uh, yes, I am here. This is Pino Esposito and I'm speaking.
Can I get your full name and address, please?
It's Pino Esposito and I'm speaking on behalf of my in-laws who reside at sixty-seven Playfair Avenue. They are seniors and don't have access. Yeah. Uh, okay, so um as, as um George was saying, I, I believe that the proper process for a project of this size has not been followed. I believe that there needed to be a wider circulation of the proposal to nearby community members who are impacted by this development. Um, the only notices that uh I'm aware of are the signs that were posted on the school doors. And um, I do believe that there's an exhibit in the materials on the agenda showing that there are some small eight and a half by eleven posters um posted on the inside of the school doors that you would really have to walk up to those to, to read them and they're, you know, set back from the sidewalk quite a bit. So really, the, the larger community is not even aware of, of this plan or of the variances that are being asked for. Um, and for a development of this size, I think that that is crucial. It, it is not only affecting the abutting neighbors, it is affecting uh lots of people um from Lawrence uh through to Playfair. Um, also, I didn't have a lot of time to look at the documents that are related to this project. But when I was looking at the um, the traffic study yesterday, um, I believe that the smaller parking lot that they are proposing uh is not justified. I, I believe that it's based on spurious reasoning. Uh, the transportation study claims there will be, there will be a daycare added to the um, to the uh repurposed high school, uh, which will go from being Dante to Regina Monday. And uh they are proposing that eighty-eight uh students will be using that facility. Uh, these children, I mean typically, I, I'm a father of kids who went to daycare. I know that we drop them off personally. It's probably likely to be a one-to-one ratio of drop-offs for these eighty-eight childrens, children, and that will create a, a lot of um uh congestion on Playfair Avenue, which will have consequences to, to um to, to traffic flow and also pose a danger to pedestrian traffic. Uh, and this is just one of many, uh, of many problems that I see with the traffic study. I think that this is a complicated project. There are a lot of things to consider. Uh, not enough time was given for residents to uh, to consider the implications of this. And I believe that on that basis, we need to uh, we need to defer this meeting until we can be properly consulted. The um, the so-called community meeting that was held uh last year was not to discuss this particular uh project, but another one. Uh, so that, that's, that's what I'm petitioning for.
Okay, can I, sir, can I ask if, if, what were those public meetings held with respect to?
Uh, the, I, I believe there was an earlier project uh which was going to um involve the Columbus Center and Villa Colombo, which is an old age residence in the area. So if I'm understanding this correctly, it was about that whole project, which in the end was uh, was canceled.
Okay, thank you.
And then basing this on the question that you asked the, the project manager.
Okay, thank you. Any questions to the speaker? We'll go to the next person on the list. I have a Paula Maruto. Are you there? Paula Maruto, are you there?
Yes.
Yes, hello, can I get your full name and address, please?
Yes, Paula Maruto. I live at sixty-nine Playfair Avenue.
Okay, can I get your comments on this application, please?
Yes, I'd like to ask that uh the decision be deferred so that the community can be properly consulted about the changes, which I do not believe that the community was properly informed about these current proposed changes. I um, I live directly I, um, I live directly in front of the school that, uh, is going to be rebuilt. It's going to have a significant impact. I don't think this is a minor variation. They're talking about building a school that's going to be 33, 33% taller than the current structure that's out there. Uh, there's going to be major impacts on traffic flow and the current traffic report is from 2016. This neighborhood has experienced tremendous redevelopment. So the flow of traffic has changed. We need a more updated report to understand what that kind of impact's going to have on the community. I mean, this is a residential neighborhood. Schools this large, projects this large usually happen on main streets, not in residential communities. So the community really needs to have some sort of input in the process and some sort of knowledge of what's happening and that hasn't happened. Um, it's for those reasons that I think, um, I would really support and would hope that you would support deferring this so that the planner can meet with us. Uh, Mike Cole has asked that, uh, the planner meet with us to discuss some of the projects so we can at least be better informed of what's being proposed. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any questions of the speaker? Go to the next person on the list. I have a Sal Centeni, are you there?
I'm here.
Yes.
Hello.
Can I get your full name and address, please?
My name's Sachin Tani. I live at 76 Playfair Avenue. I'm the only house that abuts the school.
Okay, thank you, sir. If you'd like to give us your thoughts on the application.
I'm not going to talk about what my neighbors talked about because, um, I'm just going to reiterate everything they said. My issue is privacy. Right now, the current situation is, um, a fire route, which is locked all the time next to my house. The only people that get dropped off are four-year-old to five-year-old children. And now they're proposing a staircase, a stairwell right next to my house, three floors, all windows. They'll have full access view into my bedrooms and my house, my backyard, everything. Um, I'm very worried. I have young daughters and, um, if it's going to bring in traffic from Lawrence, because now it's going to be open, it's not going to be locked anymore. It's a very big privacy issue. They're saying they're only going to put a little fence protecting the trees. What about the neighbors' privacies? That's my main concern right now, besides the shadow from May to September, not just till nine o'clock in the morning. There's going to be a shadow on my house directly almost all morning on my property. That's all I really have to say.
Okay, thank you. Does the committee have any questions of the speaker? There being none, we'll go to the next person on the list. I have, uh, Maria Rizzo, who is a trustee from the Toronto Catholic District School Board. Are you there, Ms. Rizzo?
I am.
Can I get your full name and address?
I am, thank you. Yes, my name is Maria Rizzo. I am the school trustee for Ward Five, Eglington, Lawrence, Willowdale and York Center, uh, a large part of North York. Um, and my address, I'll give you my business address. It's 80 Shepherd Avenue East.
Great, thank you, Ms. Rizzo. If you could give us your thoughts on this application.
Um, Mr. Chair, I would like, uh, I am in, obviously in favor of the application. I would like to have Ms. O'Shaughnessy speak before me so she can give you the technical details.
Okay, thank you. And, uh, we'll come back to you then.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, good. Is, I'll go back to, uh, Mr. Guzzi, are you there? Mr. Guzzi, are you there?
Uh, yes. Yes, can you hear me?
Is Maureen O'Shaughnessy there?
Uh, yes, I'm here.
Yes, if you could, uh, I think, if you could let her speak with respect to the issue of the public consultation.
Yeah, I'll, I'll speak to the public consultation and I'll also respond briefly to the concern regarding, uh, privacy of the exit stairwells overlooking a backyard. Um, the, the two meetings that are being referred to were parent community meetings. So they were meetings for the parents of the school community to talk about the relocation of students during the construction of the school. Uh, previous to that, uh, there was a feasibility study done for the campus project of the two schools, which do exist on the site right now, but the, uh, the renovation of the existing high school to, uh, become an elementary school and the construction of a new high school. And many community members, uh, were invited to participate in, in the meeting that, uh, that went through the results of that feasibility study. So there was outreach to the community through those meetings, um, but not a specific community meeting once the project was developed to the stage it is now. So those are the me, the community meetings that are being referred to. The meetings that were being referred to regarding the previous joint use development were over five years ago. Uh, so the community has been, specifically the parent community has been very involved in the understanding of the development of this site. Regarding the, uh, the concern about overlook from the exit stairs to the backyard properties, we did look at that comment and we are quite happy to put obscured glass on those stairwells. We'd like some glazing on the stairwell just to bring daylight, but we can obscure that glass so there is no view into the backyards. We're, we're quite happy to respond that way to the exit stairs that face west.
Okay, thank you.
And I'll turn it over to J, yep, turned over to Joe to answer the other questions.
Can I ask you, with respect to the, these, these meetings that you had with the public, were, were, were residents on either, on, on Playfair Avenue or residents on Good Shepherd Court, were they notified that there was, this project was going on and were they asked, invited to attend?
The, the two meetings that are being referred to were specifically for the parent community of the, uh, uh, which would include neighbors, obviously, to talk about the relocation of the students.
Okay, but what I'm hearing is this, you notified the parents of the school, but did you specifically go out and notify all the residents who, who lived on that street who didn't have children and went to that school?
No, not for those two meetings. There was an earlier meeting which, uh, presented the results of the feasibility study and there was a broader invitation to community to that meeting.
Okay, so it's, it's entirely plausible that the people who are talking today, that this is the first they've ever heard of the project. That's entirely possible.
Potentially.
Yeah, okay, thank you. I'll go back to Ms. Rizzo, thank you. You have your opportunity to speak. I could add that because technically you're associated with the agent, uh, you can speak to the project, but please don't add any new information.
So, I'll, I'll, Mr. Chair and members of the committee, thank you for allowing me to speak. Just for the record, on December the second, our staff reached out to, uh, Councillor Cole and told him that we were putting in for a committee of adjustment, or told his office. He, uh, uh, did not choose to meet with us because he was very busy and did not respond until February the third. On February the third, he still did not meet with us, uh, regarding the committee of adjustment application. Um, and, uh, his staff, uh, sent us an email indicating that, uh, we should deal with the committee of adjustment directly, which is what we have done. There is a great deal of controversy around, uh, the, uh, development of this particular site. And there has been significant history, including, including the fact that, uh, less than a month ago, the Minister of Education, uh, provided and the MPP for the area gave us $45 million to, uh, to continue the redevelopment of this project because we needed additional funds, because it was first, uh, allocated to, uh, Councillor Cole, who was the MPP at the time, who provided the funds to do the redevelopment of, of, uh, Dante Allegherry in the first place. Um, there, I will be happy to be conciliatory, uh, with a deferral, but I have, I, I can assure you that both the councillor, um, and members of the neighborhood were invited, were invited on several occasions to community consultation meetings. Um, and they are aware, I, in fact, we invited them to decide with parents, with parents, what the choices were before them. And there were four or five different choices that were provided to the community and this is the one that came up. This was the, the proposal. You have a positive staff report. These are minor variances. The issues related to, uh, the speakers today, other than the one with the privacy, and by the way, you have a transportation report and for the past two years, we've been in COVID, uh, situations. There haven't been very many kids going, going to and from the schools, um, generally speaking, with the in and out and closing and not closing and all of that kind of stuff. Um, we have a transportation study, we have a shadowing study, we have a positive staff report. I am asking you, please, we can't afford to have this linger any longer. Um, and if you do decide for deferral, if you do decide on deferral, I am asking that we meet, that you put it on the earliest possible date. I believe that you meet on the 10th or the 7th, hold on a second, I will find out what it is, the 10th and the 17th of June, um, and, um, and give us an opportunity to finally get this on, on, on the way. Uh, the students in this community need this, these particular schools. It's about time. The money has been provided, in, in fact, in fact, provided originally by Councillor Cole and his government at the time.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Rizzo. I just want to ask, I, I think it's, was very clear from the city planning report that, and I just wanted to get your understanding of this, that this particular site does not require a rezoning. It's under site pla, it's technically, it's under site plan control approval, which means it, uh, has a whole host of technical issues that have to be complied with respect to access, garbage pickup, all that other good stuff. But with respect to it's, as far as the zoning goes, it does not require a rezoning.
It does not require a rezoning and we are subject to site plan. We will be submitting that and we will be consulting the community about site plan and where the garbage is and where the loading zones are and where the parking is again and again and again. I assure you, this has been a project that is not, we have worked with planning staff, we have worked with everyone who wanted to work with us. Um, and I'm sorry that, that, you know, schools generally don't make great neighbors and I'm sorry for that, but there are two schools there and both schools have been there for more than 50 years.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Rizzo. Does the committee have any questions of the speaker? There being none, uh, we'll move it into committee. Can I get a motion on this application, please? Ms. Sankar?
Yes, through you, Mr. Chair. You know, these, these are very difficult and conflicting, uh, types of applications to deal with because on one end, I really do get what the neighbors are saying and you want to ensure, was there adequate consultation? Was there adequate, um, you know, um, uh, input? Um, but looking at the application itself and seeing that this planning and staff have, you know, been okay with this, um, the fact that transportation also has no objectives. And if I didn't hear from the neighbors and looking at this myself, I would say, um, you know, it's, it's a reasonable application. And I am hearing that there was consultation that was done. If I end up deferring this, I don't know that this is going to really change, um, exactly what's the outcome. And what's really at stake here too is I consider, uh, the area and kids that are at risk for education and that this has been around for a long time. With all of those reasons and looking at the application by itself, um, I'm going to say that this, this does meet the four tests in my eyes. And so for that reason, I'll motion to approve this application and I'll make it subject to the May 11th, um, staff recommendations, um, just sort of the, the general recommendations of that, uh, report. And that's my motion.
Okay, thank you. Someone to second Ms. Sankar's motion? Mr. Khan seconds, all those in favor? Opposed? Mr. Hunt dissenting. Uh, sir, your application has been approved, uh, and I, your application is subject to site plan approval through city planning, so, uh, good luck. Thank you, sir. We are now on item number forty-three. Thirty-one to thirty-five, St. Dennis Drive. I have one person registered to speak, that's Sydney Paul. Are you there, sir?
Yes, I'm here.
Can I get your full name and address, please?
Uh, Sydney Paul, uh, Point Architects, 522 Mount Pleasant Road.
Okay, thank you, sir. Before you start, I was, wanted to ask you, there is a city planning report, uh, dated that we, is attached to your file dated the 18th of May 2021. And it's recommending deferral so that you can prepare a parking demand study. Now, I wanted to ask because there's a big discrepancy in the parking shortfall calculations on the note, on your notice, which is basically, you say you require 342 spaces, you're only providing 337, but the Transportation Services report, it recommends that, uh, it suggests that there's actually a 73 space parking shortfall. That's a big difference. So, do you want to defer your application to discuss this with Transportation Services and clear this up?
Well, can I, I can explain that point to you. Just to start, the 73 car differences that the, um, the, um, zoning review was done and it, uh,
What I suggest, sir, if you, obviously you don't, do you want to, you don't want to defer your application?
I just, I just want to explain that, I want to explain what that difference is and why there's 73 cars. And then we can decide whether I defer or not. But it's, um, this is a, uh, existing non, uh, it was built at a certain time and it's a legal, uh, non-conforming, um, zoning. It, it has what it needed in the 1980s. But the, the bylaw was changed in 2013 and if you built the building today, you'd need 73 additional spots to meet the requirement. But in, back when it was built, it was perfectly legal and that's what the zoning, uh, notice described and what the committee of adjustment variance for five spaces is about. So, and, and in addition to that, just as, I'd like to throw in here, there presently in the building, um, there are 153 vacant parking spaces unleashed and unused in the building. That's how little parking is being used. So we can certainly describe this all to the Transportation Department and we can defer the motion and get them to agree, but I don't know, I, you, I, I don't know if you can tell me if it's unreasonable for me to proceed or not.
Well, I, I can't tell you that. You have to tell us that.
Yeah.
I'm asking, uh, the, who, who calculated your parking shortfall? Was this done on a waiver or was this calculated?
No, no, no. It, it was done by the Alessandro, uh, Valente, was it? She was the zoning examiner. We went back and forth. We did a number of, uh, parking. We went out to the site to confirm what the actual spaces were because it was a bit confusing, confusing on the, um, the survey information that was provided to me. And, and we were able, we, there are actually that number of parking spaces on the site. And she wrote up the report, which meant, uh, manifested with the variance for five parking space variance, that we'd have a shortfall if we added these five units to the building.
Okay, thank you.
And I don't know, Is it possible to say something? Because I, I'm just going to say it's, uh, right out. It's that, I feel that, you know, I, I, as a member, rely on the expertise of transport. And, um, in, in terms of looking at this, And in, in terms of looking at this, I just, you know, I want you to understand, my point of view is that I don't feel that I'm going to, even if you speak to this, deviate from what transport is telling me here, because I'm looking at their expertise to make the right decision. And unless I see them making that decision on here, that, look, we've had a conversation, take it away, modify, whatever have you, you don't have that in your possession. And I'm going to weigh heavily on their decision.
Okay, I hear that clearly. And then I would like to have a deferral, if you are willing to allow that.
I think that's extremely reasonable. Can I get a motion on deferral? Mr. Hunt?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On the agreement with the applicant, I would move that we defer this application, given the May 18th Transportation Services report requesting deferral to complete its parking review.
Thank you, Mr. Hunt. Someone to second that motion? Ms. Sankar seconds. All those in favor? Motion carries. Sir, your application's been deferred to the next available meeting so you can discuss the parking shortfall issue with Transportation Services.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Item number 44, 482 Broadway Avenue. I have two people registered to speak. The first is Sean Tucci, is the agent. Are you there, sir?
Yes, Mr. Chair, yes.
Can I, name and address, please?
Sean Tucci, I'm the office principal at Mimar Architects, Inc., 2323 Young Street, Unit 503, Toronto, Mary Ford, Peter, 2 Charlie 9.
Okay, thank you, sir. Just going through your file, I note that there's only one comment. And it's from Urban Forestry, has a standard condition attached. It's pretty clear what you're asking for in the seven variances. I'll just ask, is there anything that you'd like to tell the committee that isn't in the material that we have before us today?
No, Mr. Chair, except that we think it is a very, very reasonable application. I mean, you're very familiar with Lee Side area. And typically, the Lee Side Association is not very friendly with a Committee of Adjustment application. But we managed to negotiate with them and update them early on in the process. And to my understanding from my staff, we do have their support. So I think that's a great sign that we really took, took the effort to make sure that everybody's happy with the application. General, we think it meets the four tests. Respectfully, request your approval.
Okay, thank you. I notice I have one other person registered to speak. That is Claudine Lukoweski. Are you there, madam?
I am. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you, madam. If I could get your full name and address, please?
It is Claudine Lukoweski, 471 Broadway Avenue. M as in Mary, 4 G as in George, 2 R as in Ralph, 4. I'm concerned, because if I'm looking at the information that's been provided, it seems very similar to a house just a few doors west of, of this house. And, and one thing I've noticed on their plans is where it looks like they're wanting to alter the driveway. So I'd like clarification on whether or not they're making that garage, double garage or a, a one and a half garage? Because I did object to 476 Broadway. And I've been listening for, you know, almost five hours now. When you guys, when other people have discussed size of driveways, it is a bylaw issue. You cannot have side-by-side parking in Toronto unless you have a double car garage. And what the 476 Broadway did is they, when I went to the meetings, because I brought this up, and they were deeming part of their garage as soft landscaping. I was questioning that to no end, to make sure that they were not going to make that into a side-by-side parking. Because what happens is then these developers go and flip the house and they put it as a four-car driveway. And that's not fair to the rest of us residents, knowing that you can't park on soft landscaping. You just, like, it's just, it's ridiculous. So I'd like confirmation to make sure that it is understood and recorded at this meeting as to what the size and their intention is for a driveway and a garage. Also, just wanting to make sure that when they say to construct a new dwelling, it is a complete demolition that they're talking of? And also, I noticed that they are trying to, on variance number five, they have it that they want 0.68 times of the lot area. And that is 0.02 times bigger than 476 Broadway, which is a pretty monstrosity of a house as it is. I go back and I urge the committee to dive deep into their conscience and really realize, like, I didn't, like, the environmental impact these monstrosity of houses have is just huge. The bigger your house, I don't see anywhere, any of these houses putting in solar panels, you know, digging down to use the, the heat and the cooling of the earth. They, they, they end up putting their backyards fully in, in interlocking brick. They do their frontal in interlocking brick where they just have a strip. There's also, they have one tree that is listed on their, on their drawings. If you drive by, there is a Japanese maple tree that is not listed on this drawing. And I did Google what, whether or not Japanese maple tree is a tree or a bush. And it is clarified as a tree. So they do only have one tree on their drawing as being demolished. And that, again, is an atrocity when the City of Toronto keeps demolishing trees when we have politicians out there talking about climate change. So we need to start putting power to the words that we have our politicians saying. And I urge very strongly that you do not allow this to happen in taking more green space away from us and having them put in what they call soft landscaping, which we all know is interlocking brick. And that just is not, you know, we have to stop doing this because that's exactly what 476 Broadway has done. And I am still, you know, waiting to hear back, because I did object to all of that. Soft landscaping should be grass and trees, not concrete. So those are my objections. And I really thank the committee for working these long hours. And, you know, I hope that they go back and realize that the neighbourhood, as much as they did consult with, that's news to me, the Lee Side Property Association. Again, they're asking for a bigger lot space, lot area than what 476 Broadway asked for. And like I said, the more space that you allot these people, we're not 10 feet tall where we need 15-foot ceilings. Well, I guess my point is, is like, the, the bigger the house, the bigger the environmental impact. You have to have a huge BTU to cool these houses down. Think about your own house. If you have, if you don't have your windows open right now and your air conditioning is running because your house is so big.
Okay, madam, thank you. Does the committee have any questions of the speaker? We'll go back to the agent. Mr. Tucci, are you there?
Yes, Mr. Chair. I mean, I, I think, I think the, the speaker was talking about a different, it's not a 476 Broadway. It's not two-car garage. It is, is not a monster house. Is not going to change the earth climate. It is a very moderate development. We are under any, any, whether you look at it, you know, altogether or individually, we're under what typically gets submitted here. And, and Lee Side Association, which is, which is very actively advocate of reviewing designs and very seriously taking them to T-Lab if they have to. We consulted with them, they had no issue. So responding to their concern, no, it is not a two-car garage. The driver, there's no variance for driver garage size or anything like that. So I hope that, that helps to solve some of their concerns. Other than that, if there is any questions, I would be happy to answer.
Okay, thank you, sir. Does the committee have any questions of the speaker? There being none, could I get a motion on this application, please? Please note, the only condition we have is from Urban Forestry. Mr. Kidd?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I think the Lee Side Residents Association is a very good judge of what's appropriate for, for the Lee Side neighbourhood. And given their support and, I certainly feel that the proposed variances are fairly modest. And they meet the four tests for minor variance. I'd like to put forward a motion to accept the application subject to forestry condition.
Thank you very much, Mr. Kidd. Someone to second that, that motion, Ms. Sankar seconds. All those in favor? Motion carries unanimously. Sir, your application's been unanimously approved subject to urban forestry conditions.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and members. Have a good day.
Thank you. Item number 45, 647 Glen Cairn Avenue. I have-
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair.
Yes, I have one person registered to speak. That's Tony Enriquez. Are you there, sir?
Yes, I am.
Can I get your full name and address, please?
Yes, Tony Enriquez, 543 Concord Avenue. And I'm the agent for this application.
Thank you, sir. I, looking at your file, I note there's a recommended standard, standard condition from Urban Forestry, excuse me. There's a report from City Planning dated the 14th of May that appears to have no objections to your application, provided that the property is developed substantially in accordance with the site plan and east elevation drawing submitted to the committee, attached as attachments one and two to their report. It's pretty clear what you're asking for in your, in your variances. I'll just ask, is there anything that you'd like to tell the committee that isn't contained in the material that we have before us this afternoon?
The, the only comment that I would like to add is that this is very typical on this part of the street. And we're at the corner of Eggel Mount and Glen Cairn. And if you were to walk east on Glen Cairn, within 100 metres, you would probably see 11 houses that have recently been constructed. And they're all similar to this with a garage at the front. And this includes the one directly in front, which is also a corner lot. So we're really proposing what is really being developed in this area.
Okay, thank you, sir. I'll just ask the committee, does the committee have any questions of the speaker? There being none, could I get a motion on this application, please? Mr. Khan?
Sir, I, I had one question to ask, if you permit me to-
Sorry, we'll go back, Mr. Khan. I'm sorry, sir. What was the question, Mr. Khan?
Sir, my question is to you, there is a note to eliminate variance number six, which is related to transport services. If that is eliminated, that is the reason we don't have the transport services report?
The, the variance number six is actually an existing variance. The, the, the existing garage, there's an existing garage there that actually uses this driveway. And this is actually exactly the same as the house directly in front, which is also a corner lot and also has the driveway at the front. It wouldn't make any sense to, I mean, we, we wouldn't be able to have this house to have a driveway at the side, because it would take all the soft landscaping at the front.
Okay, thank you.
My, my request is, why the transportation services report is missing?
Well, there is, yeah, we just don't, they didn't comment on it, Mr. Khan. I don't know that there, that there was a, I can't explain why they wouldn't have commented. But there's no comment from Transportation Services on this particular driveway. I can only assume that they have no comment.
Thank you.
Thank you. Can I get a motion on this application, please? Ms. Sankar?
Yes, through you, Mr. Chair. I think this application is reasonable, acceptable, and does meet the four tests in my eyes. I'm motioning to approve this application. It will be subject to forestry, as well as the May 14th staff report that the property be developed substantially in accordance with the site plan and east elevation drawing submitted to the committee. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sankar. Someone to second that motion? Mr. Kidd seconds. All those in favor? That motion carries unanimously. Sir, your application's been unanimously approved subject to urban forestry and city planning conditions.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and have a good day.
Thank you, sir. We're now on item number 46. I have one person registered to speak. That is Maydi Ajband. Are you there?
Hi, my name is Nushin Mazafary. I'm here on behalf of my colleague, Mehdi Ajran.
Thank you very much, madam. I have, looking through your file, I note there's only one can, recommended can, comment here. It's from Urban Forestry, they're standard conditions. You have five variants before us. It's pretty clear what you're asking for. I'll just ask, is there anything that you'd like to tell the committee that isn't in the material we have before us this afternoon?
No, nothing in particular. It's a very assertive, forward application and planning has no concern about it.
Okay, thank you. Does the committee have any questions of the speaker? There being none, could I get a motion on this application, please? Mr. Hunt?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I would move-
Mr. Hunt, we can't hear you.
Oh, you can't hear me?
We can't hear you, sir.
Do you hear me now?
Little bit, you gotta speak up.
Okay. I would move approval of-
Mr. Hunt, we can't hear you.
I'm unmuted.
Oh, there, hang on. Okay, try it now.
I, do you hear me now?
Oh, that's there.
Okay. I would move the approval of this application subject to the May 19th urban forestry requirements.
Thank you, Mr. Hunt. Someone to second that motion? Mr. Kidd seconds. All those in favor? That motion carries. Thank you very much, madam. Your application's been unanimously approved subject to urban forestry conditions.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item number 47, 10 Blythewood Crescent. I have one person registered to speak. That's Victor Guetberg. Are you there, sir?
Yes, I'm here.
Yes, sir. Could I get your full name and address, please?
Victor Guetberg. I'm an architect, representing the owner of the house, 33 Belvedere Crescent, in Richmond Hill.
Okay, thank you, sir. Going through your file, I note that there's one report from City Planning dated the 9th of April, 2021. They have no objection, provided that the floor space index of the dwelling, excluding the basement floor, shall be no greater than 0.583 times the area of the lot. Have you had the opportunity to read that report, sir?
Yes, yes, I did. We are in agreement with this condition. And basically, I just want to explain why, why it's such a condition. Because we, the increase in the gross floor area is very minor. We're just modifying the third floor. So the actual increase in the gross floor area of existing gross floor area is 11.93 square metres. But because the basement is closer to, basement elevation is closer to established grade than the first floor. So zone examiner included basement into gross floor area calculation, making FSI looks, look high, 0.826. But yeah, if basement is excluded, then yes, the FSI, actual FSI is 0.55.
Okay, thank you, sir. Does the committee have any questions of the speaker? There being none, could I get a motion on this application, please? Mr. Khan?
Thank you, sir. Mr. Chair, through you, I'm taking the staff recommendations, which you have, which were read out by you, and just repeating, the floor space index of the dwelling, excluding the basement floor, shall be no greater than 0.583 times lot area. And I move that this application be approved on that condition.
Thank you very much, Mr. Khan. Someone to second that motion? Mr. Hunt seconds. All those in favor? That motion carries unanimously. Sir, your application's been unanimously approved subject to city planning conditions.
Thank you very much. Good afternoon.
Thank you very much. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. Can I have a motion to terminate the meeting? Ms. Sankar? Ms. Sankar, motion, that motion carries, and I second it. Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, have a great evening.